All right, thanks. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Christina, I'm doing what I want them to do.
Oh, I hate wearing headphones. It's, I know it's necessary, but.
I know. I do, too, but I don't understand how they're supposed to work. Do I turn them on?
How high tech are they?
I don't know. That's the problem. I really wish my computer was working and I could be in my office. They don't seem to be doing what they're supposed to do. I gotta call my technical support.
There you go. Oh, soccer, the boys soccer team was up two to zero with about, about three minutes into the game when I left.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. Yeah, so pretty exciting.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, they're working. Oh, my gosh, they're so loud. How do I turn?
We could all just talk super quietly. Have hushed tones.
That'd be good.
Well, we'll do our golf announcer. So be golf announcer night.
I mean, I feel like I'm gonna be yelling there so loud.
You're, you're not yelling. You're good.
Good news is it's recording, Jake.
Good, good. I have, I have so many different tabs open and things going on my computer. I went, put something in my calendar, so I don't forget. I could not find the meeting again, so. Be interesting to do the share screen tonight.
All the tabs that you have open?
Oh, my gosh.
To see them?
I have like eight different windows and they all have sixteen or seventeen tabs open. It's.
Jake, that is not Feng Shui.
It is far from whatever, one hundred and eighty degrees from Feng Shui is, is what I, where I am.
There should probably be a class on that, how to Feng Shui your tabs.
That would be, that would be a good idea. True. All right. I think, I think I've got them settled in now.
Oh, good. These are gonna drive me crazy.
Yeah.
They're falling off my head. They're weird.
Are your parents coming down for Thanksgiving?
Yeah.
Oh, that's nice. Good.
Yeah.
Good. We're gonna, our tradition since we've moved up to New England in two thousand and two has been to go to my wife's parents and then, you know, our two sisters-in-law and their son come down from Maine and her brother and his kids and we haven't done it since COVID, so.
That's awesome.
My mother-in-law was convinced that we would never do it again, so. We're very excited to, to be returning to that tradition.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Yeah. I might, I would, I love staying home on Thanksgiving Day, so the over the river and through the woods does not do that much for me, but it's lovely once we get there, so.
Yeah. We're hosting at our house. Which is fun.
You, you guys have, you're like Hallmark movie, you know, Thanksgiving destination. That's a perfect New England location, so.
Yeah, it's the first time we're hosting and I cannot tell you what we're doing because we're being recorded, but my family might be shocked.
I can only imagine.
I don't want it to get into the news what the plan is, surprise.
Hey, Patrick. Hey, Carrie. Hi, Carrie.
Hey, there. Hey, Christina.
Hello.
This is, this is, this has felt like a lengthy week. I, I don't know if it was the time change or election stress or full moon or.
All of it.
All of the above.
It's also the time of the year in terms of school when lots of stuff is happening.
You're right. You're right. Absolutely right.
So you chose Shakespeare over the president of Iceland? It's all right. It's all good.
I.
We had a full house and it's, yeah, and it was recorded, so.
I bet you did. I bet you did. We, um, we have a lot of people out of Mount Greylock today because Lanesboro Elementary hosts a Veterans Day breakfast. All of our staff that were veterans at Mount Greylock went down for breakfast, so we were really short. And we had visitors coming and so it was, yes. I, I will watch the recording, though. I'm completely fascinated by that.
Yeah, it was great. Hey, Curtis.
Hello.
Hey, Arisala. Hey, Curtis.
Howdy, howdy.
Hey, Steve.
Hello.
Hello.
Just waiting for Jose. Has anyone talked to him today by any chance?
Um, I actually talked to him in the Albany airport. So it was before six AM, so I'm not sure if either one of us remember what we talked about.
But you probably talked about the meeting tonight, right?
Yeah, where are you gonna take the meeting? So I'm taking a meeting from a colleague's office here at the University of Pittsburgh.
Nice.
So you were going. Was Jose coming or going?
He was, no, he was going as well. So he's in Newark, I think, right now.
Nice.
But that's one of the nice things about Zoom.
Yeah. So you're, you're at Pitt right now. That's cool. All right.
So I used to teach down here.
Oh, I didn't know that, Steve. That's, that's neat.
Yep.
There he is. Wonderful.
Ah, the look of a hotel room. I know it. I know it well.
See, I've got a whiteboard behind me, so I can, you know, take notes.
That's good. Okay, Jake, are you waiting for anybody else or can we get started?
Um, I see two of the three principals. I know the third principal is down watching the men's soccer team who are up two zero about ten minutes in.
Three zero.
Zero now. See, that's what I.
Yes.
Good. Somebody told me as I was leaving, if I was the good luck charm, they were gonna come and pull me out of the meeting. Clearly, I'm not the good luck charm. So Jake, Jake will be joining us when we get there and Joel will be joining us as.
Oh, there they are. Coming to us live from the field.
Turn, turn the camera towards the field.
Charlotte, that's dedication.
All right, so let's get started since everyone's here. I'd like to call the Mount Greylock Regional School District School Committee to order. It is Thursday, November tenth, two thousand and twenty-two. It is six oh two PM. We are meeting remotely via Zoom and some people are on the soccer field. Um, the meeting will be broadcast on Willingnet TV channel thirteen oh two and it will be posted to the Mount Greylock Regional School District YouTube channel within twenty-four hours of the end of the meeting. I would like to call the role if everyone could, um, say their last name alphabetically, please.
Bowen here.
Conry here.
Constantine here.
Elfin Byrne here.
Green here.
Boy here.
Gail, look, here.
Yeah. At Mount Greylock Regional School District, our mission is to create a community of learners working together in a safe and challenging learning environment that encourages restorative-based processes, respect, inclusive diversity, courtesy, integrity, and responsibility through high expectations and cooperation resulting in lifelong learning and personal growth. Next or first really on the agenda is the student spotlight, so we would like to invite Charlotte to speak.
No, she's. Hi, everyone. Um, I'm again just Cheryl Hallbar, a sophomore at Mount Greylock, coming live to you at the.
There we go.
Um, Sweet Sixteen, and we are currently up three zero in the first quarter with sixteen minutes left to play. And I think we're doing pretty well.
We're doing great.
So going on top of that, for our sports and play updates, the Mount Greylock Girls Soccer will move on to their final eight in the state tournament after beating. And the girls volleyball team will be as well. This, they'll, they'll be playing their final eight this Friday. And the unified basketball team just had their first classic last night with a spectacular turnout from both parents and students competing on their both, both of their teams of the white and red. White did win, and I might have been on that side. For Shakespeare and Co., they're wrapping up rehearsals. This, with their, with their rehearsals and plays on Friday and Saturday at seven, and you can buy tickets online. And Shakespeare and Co. allows that the school to have one Lennox Run on the seventeenth, as well as the ten other schools a part of the community on different various states. We recently had a mock election with MG Rev, Register, Educate Vote. And it ran with a governor, lieutenant governor, representative of Congress, attorney general, secretary of state, state treasurer, governor's council, and the four ballot questions. Despite only having like a small pool of people with around fifty percent of the student body voting, most of the mock elections were right, except for the outcomes on ballot question number three, the alcohol licensing. Sorry. And lastly, we had quite a few speakers in the first quarter going on to our second with Greylock Talks spearheaded by Caleb Lowe under the subcommittee in student council with Charles Bonados, a Berkshire Immigrant Center employee and. In its first round. Later, they also brought in small business owners Eleanor Goodwin, Jack Miller, Lindsay Nathlock, who shared their experiences with entrepreneurship and local businesses for Entrepreneurship Fridays, which they're hoping to continue again. Additionally, there was Dr. Singh, who talked about racism in different forms across the whole day, ending with a parent-specific presentation that also had great turnout and students really appreciated his talks. For now, I have to go back to the soccer games, but thank you for having me. Have a great night.
Thank you, Charlotte. You did a great job handling that with all the background noise. That's impressive. Well, Jake. Back to you.
Okay, so at this point in the meeting, as, as you all are aware, elections, including two seats on the school committee, were, were on the ballot on Tuesday, and so we congratulate the folks who were successful in their, in their run, and we're very grateful for your service and very grateful to everybody that participated, including the other candidate that, that put herself out there and certainly to all of the, the thousands of voters that, that took time to go out or return their mail-in ballot. We're very grateful for all who participated in, in the statewide offices in our, in our House election, but, but this most local form of government, the school committee, we're very grateful for the folks that took this seriously and that made their voices heard through the election process. So at this point, I would call for nominations for members to serve as chair of the school committee. I, I see Julia's hand and then Steve's hand. Julia?
Um, I would like to nominate Christina. I, and I recognize that that is maybe different than our precedent has been set before, but I think we've been, same thing I said last year, steady as we are. I would like to see that steadiness continue, so I'd like to nominate Christina.
Is there a second?
A second.
Carrie has, Julia has moved Christina forward as chair. Carrie has seconded. Is there any discussion? Steve?
Yeah, so I, I thank Christina for, well, actually, we should first ask Christine if she's willing to serve.
Yes.
Okay, so I, I thank Christina for her service and her willing to serve again. But I unfortunately do not support her serving as chair again. I think there are several reasons why it is good to have different people come in as chair. There is reasons why we have alternated between towns. We've occasionally had one town hold it longer, which we have had recently. Um, I prefer to just leave it at that as to, I would like to see if anyone else is willing to step up and serve as chair. I'm, I would prefer not to, but I'm willing to do so. Jose, would you be willing to be chair?
In, in terms of, I, I apologize for interrupting, and Jose, I, I certainly don't mean to interrupt your, your train of thought or speaking. In, in terms of how we proceed with our meetings, is it, is, is this a part of the conversation or we have a nomination that's been seconded?
I think we asked for, oh, any other nomination.
We asked any other nomination.
Thank you, Carrie.
And so, 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 so in, in previous years, we often asked somebody before we nominate them, would you be willing to serve? Or sometimes we just nominate and then ask them afterwards.
Thank you. Thank you both.
Yep.
Apologies, Jose.
No, Jake, I appreciate that moment for me to gather my thoughts. Stephen, I, I, I think I, I, I understand and respect your perspective and understand the importance of having, you know, diverse voices and opportunities for other members of the school, school committee to take on this important role for the school committee. My bandwidth is, is limited, as I'm sure all of ours is. If the motion to approve or, or to, to this motion that we have for Christina to continue on as our chair fails, I would be happy to, to, to step up and, and, you know, and accept a nomination to, for, for, for chair of the school committee.
Is there any, thank you, thank you all. Is there any other discussion from the members? Steve?
Yeah. So in the, in the past, Christine, when you have been chair, I have brought some things to your attention that have been of concern to me, where the district has not been following guidelines from legal counsel, and you did not put them on the agenda for the full committee to hear. And that's my primary concern about having you serve as chair again. So going forward, I would like to be assured that when school committee members bring forward issues like this, that they will be considered and heard by the full committee. To some extent, this is easier now that we have a situation where we have a standing item on our agendas where people can request items, but that is for future meetings, and that adds an entire month of delay. And in the past, there was issues, you know, especially concerning some votes on the field, as well as some votes on the illegally changed policy before spring break, where things were just not brought to a discussion, and that, you know, really concerns me.
Steve, I'm going to step in and take some exception to your continued use, including in my evaluation of that notion of illegally made decisions. You and I have had several conversations about that. I think we've had open conversations with the school committee in public session. I just wanted on record that I take great exception to your use of that word, and I would ask you, please, please stop framing.
I, I, I.
A conversation about having in-person school during COVID with that word illegally. We, we perhaps violated our own policy, but I, I just have to say.
That's, that's fine. I, I, I will happily accept that correction, too. We violated our own policy, and when district council told us we violated our own policy, we continued to violate it. And then we selectively enforced the new policy, not treating all students equally. I'm happy to do that correction.
Thank you. Is there further conversation on the motion that's on the floor to elect Christina Conry as the chairperson?
So, yeah, I would just like to say my, my only hesitation in having Christina continuous chair is that I would really love to hear Christina's voice more. Um, and I know that this has come up in other, you know, conversations amongst the committee. The chair can serve, I think, on some committees if he or she so wishes. And the chair certainly can participate in conversations, and I would just encourage Christina or any future chair to, you know, be a full part of the, the conversation amongst the, the committee and not to hold back because the chair is also the facilitator.
Julia?
I don't have enough, you know, of the detail about which Steve spoke. And I think that COVID presented some incredibly challenging times and decisions. And I appreciate the equanimity with which Christina has led this committee and appreciate the otherwise calm way in which we have worked together. And I absolutely understand the question of, you know, should it flip between Williamstown and Lanesboro? But as I said in the nomination, I feel that I, I don't feel in this committee that we have a Lanesboro school committee and a Williamstown school committee trying to share space. I really feel we are one school committee. Um, and I, I don't, I, I don't see that need the way it may have been needed in the past. I see us as one, working together.
Steve? So I, I would agree that I don't see that as something that must be done. I see that as something that is good to do. There is a reason why when we run, we don't run just from our town. And I actually stood outside the polls, both in Williamstown, and I went down and I stood outside the polls in Lanesboro. We are elected to represent the entire district. Some things that we do need to do, or at least should strongly consider, I think we do have to have the chair and the vice chair from different towns. Is that correct?
The policy is in the packet. I think it's, it's good practice.
Is there any further discussion? If not, I think we'll go ahead. We do have a motion on the floor. It's been made and seconded that Christina is, is elected to serve as chair. Can we have a, a voice vote in alphabetical order? Yea or nay on the, on the motion that's on the floor, please?
Oh, and I.
Conry, I.
Constantine?
Green, I.
Elfin Byrne, I.
Aloy, I.
Milla, no.
I believe that, that, that passes on a vote of, of six to one. Uh, and with that, I will very, very gratefully hand over running this meeting to Chair Conry. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you, Jake. Okay, next up, um, we are looking for nominations for Vice Chair of the School Committee. Julia?
I would like to nominate Carrie. If Carrie would accept it.
Sure.
Thank you, Carrie. Do I have a second? Ursula, seconds. Any discussion? Steve?
So just, you know, same as before, you know, Carrie, you know, thank you for your service. But I do think, you know, given the amount of work these positions can be, it's good to rotate and have other people doing these as well. And for the record, I'm interested in being secretary again.
Not for you, just.
Good to know. Julia, did you have your hand up?
I'm good.
Hearing no further discussion. I have a nomination for Carrie for Vice Chair. Um, by Bowen and seconded by Alloy. All in favor?
Bowen, I.
Conry, I.
Constantine, I.
Elfin Byrne, I.
Green, I.
I.
Milla, I.
That motion passes unanimously. Welcome Chair Carrie or Vice Chair Carrie. It has been a very, very long day. And we're just getting started. Do I have any nominations for secretary? Ursula?
Or? If you would choose to accept.
So I, I will accept with the same, uh, statement I'm. statement I made for the other two nominations, that it's good for multiple people to take these roles. I'm happy to continue doing it if someone else wants to.
I'll, I'll second Ursula's for the same reason that I've been saying, we have something that's working.
Any further discussion? Ursula?
I just have a comment. I was looking at the policy that's in the packet and it refers to the clerk versus the secretary. So is that something that needs to be updated or it, we just call it the secretary? I was just curious.
It, it's funny because it actually, by calling it the clerk, makes it a little less confusing when we get to the district secretary piece.
But anyway, just, just a point of, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you. And it may be, maybe the way we want to refer to it in the future. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Bowen, I.
Conry, I.
Constantine, I.
Elfenbein, I.
Green, I.
I, I.
Miller, I.
Hi. That motion passes. Welcome Clerk slash Secretary Miller. Okay, next up is the Subcommittee Discussion. And I put, there's a few things in the packet and they were, they're in there for a reason. Last year, we believe we voted to move the Subcommittee, Subcommittee Organization to the December meeting. And we did that so that you don't know who's going to be the Chair. And the way the policy reads, the Chair sets up the Subcommittee. So and, and in addition, in an election year, like this was, the whole committee could have changed. So we, we made a motion and voted to move that to December. I would propose we do the same thing. The one thing I wanted to point out is we probably should have done a look back on our policy because the policy does state that the Subcommittee reorganization, reorganization will happen in this meeting. Steve?
Can we just, for now, keep the committees as they are and then reorganize again in December? We've adjusted committees in the past and then that just makes it legally smooth. And so just for the next month, just keep the committees as they are. And then in December, you know, have people say what committees they would like to serve on, give you that information.
That's essentially what will happen, but I think we do have to vote to move that discussion to our next meeting. The Subcommittee Organization Discussion to the next meeting because it, it does state in the policy that we will do it at this meeting.
No, what I was just saying is just do it right now. Just keep the committees as they are in this meeting.
Well, sorry, could I actually recommend that we for, for cleanness, I'll move the committees as proposed in the packet, which is slightly different from as they are now.
I'll second that, which I think is what Steve was getting at, right?
Right. So the only change that I know of is because I am Chair of Finance and now also Chair of Track and Field. I'm proposing to take myself, and I talked to Christina about this, off of policy. And I also feel strongly that there should be someone from Lanesboro on policy. And we were like, hey, maybe you could talk to Curtis about that. So I, did she, did, did you have that? I don't know if you're, okay, cool. So the only change I'm, I'm aware of is that Curtis would take my place on policy. And then I'd only be on two subcommittees.
Steve?
So we used to have an Education Subcommittee. And we, we've had it a couple of times in the past. And I would like to propose that we add an Education Subcommittee. I think it would be extremely useful. I'm, I'm happy to talk in greater detail about why. But I, I think it shows a little bit of what the priorities of the district are when we have a group of people tasked with some of that issues a little bit more regularly. You know, we had said when we disbanded the Education Subcommittee, that every other meeting of the full school committee, we'd be getting detailed reports. And that hasn't happened. And so I think it would be nice to have a smaller working group that can investigate a few things and report back to the full committee.
I'm slightly concerned about the word investigate a few things. And the education as, a new Subcommittee in education would have to be defined very carefully. Because that's not one of the school committee's primary roles. So I would be concerned about that particular Subcommittee. Currently, the Subcommittee's we have sort of are, really revolve around what our roles are as a committee. What we're supposed to be doing within the district.
I mean, I, I'm happy to have the conversations at the full committee level. We used to have on a cycle presentations from the different departments. We used to have presentations from the pound advisory committee. We've lost hearing a lot of that. And as a committee, I think would be valuable to be hearing that.
Ursula, I think your hand was up first and then Julia.
I think it was Jose.
Oh, gosh, maybe it was Jose. Everyone
Yeah, he was up before mine. Yeah, go ahead.
You're also kind for noticing me. Two questions. The first one, the reorganization of the Policy and Governance Subcommittee. Is that something that needs to wait until December or is that something that we can do more immediately? There's an upcoming meeting on November 30th and, you know, wondering, alleviating some of Carrie's workload. Is that, is that something that needs to wait? That's the first question. And then the, it doesn't need to wait. Okay. And I don't know what, what the process. It, well, I'll, I'll wait to hear what that process can look like. The second question is, is following on from Stephen's request for a new Subcommittee. This is something that I, I'm bashfully unaware of is what the policy is for formulating new subcommittees. What, what, what is entailed in that process? Is the second question.
So the, the, in the packet, we do talk about how the subcommittees are formed and it essentially says, the school committee shall appoint members to Subcommittee at their annual organizational meeting for a period of one year. The subcommittees may be created for a specific purpose and to make recommendations for the full committee. The, it says the committee chair, subject to the approval of the committee, will appoint the Subcommittee Chair and its members. So, and then there's a whole bunch of other roles, but that's essentially how, how we've done it in the past where the Chair has reached out and talked to school committee members about their interests and then tried to weigh as everyone knows, if you're the Chair of the school committee or a Subcommittee, there is a great deal of work involved in that. So we do try to balance that, that out so that not not any one single member is bearing the burden of, of the work.
No, no one's pulling a Carrie Green is what you're saying. The second, just to follow on to the, if we wanted to schedule a vote for a new Subcommittee, that's something that would have to get scheduled in the agenda. Is that correct?
There is, there is a vote on the agenda. So it is something that we can do.
Oh, so if Stephen wanted to move the creation of an Education Subcommittee, that's something that we, we can be prepared to vote on today with the remit of that committee being defined later.
I, I would not want to do it, no.
Got it. Okay. Just, I just wanted to know about how the process worked. And then, and then the last, so the first question was this, and could you explain the process by which the Policy and Governance Subcommittee could be, you know, shaken up during today's meeting? And how, how can we get Curtis on that Subcommittee and, and, and carry off of it?
Well, so, sorry, my, my hand is up. I'm actually permitted if the Chair would allow. So I think, Jose, what we were saying earlier is our policy, our district policy states that we're, we should vote subcommittees tonight. So that's how we do it. We just vote the, what's in the packet, the listing of subcommittees. If however, we want to wait and vote them next month, we need to vote to postpone the voting of the Subcommittee. So we either do it tonight as per our policy or we postpone it to next month. So I was just saying, to be in line with policy, if no one has any objection to this one change, we could just vote them. But if we have good reason to wait and, you know, people want to think about what they want to do, then we should postpone. We should absolutely postpone, Jose. If, if anybody has hesitation about their service on a Subcommittee, we should absolutely postpone. So you would just vote down my motion?
You didn't make a motion yet. I just wanted to make sure I didn't hear that.
I thought I did.
She did. She did make a motion.
Apologies.
And it was seconded by Ursula.
Oh, great. All right. Apologies. So I'll blame it on the poor hotel.
Yeah, no worries. I, I feel like we're all
Can't hear you.
Yeah. So my hand was up because, you know, Steve, I understand your interest in this Education Policy Committee. You ran it very differently than any of our subcommittees and it was never approved by the committee. That, the, the format in which you ran the Subcommittee, it did not follow regular committee agendas. It, you could argue, I would argue that as a school committee member, you maybe overstepped, oh, you know, overstepped your line or your lane or something. Did things that, you know, maybe were not appropriate in terms of investigating what was going on in the school as a school committee member. I would also again oppose what you said about not getting detailed reports. We get detailed reports from our superintendent, which is our line of communication into the school. We get detailed reports from our principals and our curriculum director through our superintendent on the agendas. We get detailed reports from our Special Education Director. This is how we are supposed to get our information. We are not supposed to go directly to teachers. We're not supposed to go directly to curriculum directors. We are not supposed to go directly to anyone except the superintendent. That is in our policy. And we have to all follow that. So a Subcommittee that runs so differently from other subcommittees, I would not approve. It, we would really, as Christina said, need to think about the parameters of that Subcommittee, what its purpose is and how it's going to be run. And I've argued before that it is all of our purpose to, we are an Education Subcommittee. That's why we are here. It's why we run. It's why we're elected. To talk about and decide on education policy. To hire and evaluate our superintendent. To negotiate contracts. Right? These are our responsibilities. And we cannot go directly to, you know, people who work in the school. That is a violation of our role as, as school committee members. I'll leave it at that.
So I'll, I'll, I'll push back a little bit. We did follow the agendas. We ran it more like the Phase Two Committee where we had discussions. We never did anything retroactively, unlike other committees I have been on. I would be very happy not to have an Education Subcommittee and to have this done as the full committee. I think we've been so busy putting out fires for the past eight years that a lot of this is missed. We used to have reports from the different departments where they told us in detail what was going on. I found that very valuable. We used to have reports from the pound advisory committee. I found that very valuable. And so I'm happy to just leave that for now. And this is something we can discuss further as a full committee. But I think if we got tasked with education, we should have more understanding of what is going on. I'll, I'll leave it at that.
And, and that would seem appropriate to me as agenda requests or requests to the superintendent to be included on a committee meeting or to the Chair.
But, but we had more of a cycle where we were constantly getting information from the different aspects of the school. And we, we've, we've lost that.
Ursula, I think you had your hand up next.
Sorry, I'm trying to find my Zoom. Okay, I'm not muted. So I appreciate everything Carrie and Steve just said. I'm kind of taking it all in. But my question was, if we were to move forward with a new Subcommittee, it feels like we all, we all are very busy people. We all have so much going on. We all already are at least on one Subcommittee, right? So I'm just curious how adding another Subcommittee would work. Would people come off of other subcommittees? Would people be on more than one? It just feels like adding something else to the list is would be very hard. So I was just kind of curious how you would see that working if we were to add another Subcommittee that needs to be staffed, for lack of a better word.
So it, it would be people taking additional committee work. And the idea is to try to have some of the conversations at a smaller Subcommittee level so that, you know, the meetings which are already four hours right now do not become five, six hours. But again, the reason we're here is the education and I would be thrilled, even if it means five, six hour meetings or potentially an extra two hour meeting occasionally to have this done at the full committee level.
Julia, you have your hand up.
Yeah. I, I, so I've got my own, this is still on the, the sub, an Education Subcommittee concept. I have my own experience on different boards with a committee that is, is tasked, even if the organ, like, like, even if the organization is specifically about education, there is kind of an outcomes committee of some kind. So I have that experience, but I also would say when I, this past year, one of our goals as a, as a board that we discussed in policy was to update the descriptions of the committees. And I reached out to Liz LaFond and asked, you know, for, for committee descriptions. And when I told her which ones we had, she, she wrote, and I quote, "I'm happy to see this list of subcommittees. Mount Graylock is right on target." So, I mean, I would definitely be wanting to listen to MASC about what they would suggest in our context. And, and I also want to say, and Steve, I don't know if this gets at some of what you're looking for. Our job is to approve a budget and evaluate the superintendent. And sometimes, you know, and, you know, those are the two most important, I mean, maybe I'm missing something, the two most important things, but shepherd the organization's resources effectively. If we need greater context for how to do that effectively and understand the outcomes of the efforts that we've done, I would also be happy to have an extra meeting here and there. I actually don't know if I can handle five hour meetings anymore. I would be happy to have an extra meeting here and there. And, you know, filter requests through Christina and Jake. I mean, I would be really glad for that.
Any further discussion? Jose?
We still have Carrie's motion to either discuss or, or vote on. I just want to make sure my fading brain is not, not forgetting what we've got. Is that right? And I think I might need reminder what the motion is. Apologies.
Carrie, do you want to restate your motion?
Yeah, the motion was to approve the Subcommittee listing Yeah, the motion was to approve the subcommittee listing in the packet. And I can bring that up or somebody can share it. We should actually.
Yeah.
It's the draft proposal for subcommittees. So, if you want to put it on the screen, we can all take a look at it.
Did we want to just make a friendly amendment to? Oh, no, it's there. Okay. Oh, so the one I looked, still had your name, Carrie. Okay. I must have looked at an old document.
I think there were two. There's the current one and this.
That's fine. That's fine.
Yeah. So, again, the idea had been to vote on these in December, but because it's our current policy, if we want to just vote them now.
I was just also going to ask who authors these documents because I'd like to let them know that my name is misspelled. Which is very common.
Yeah. We will make sure that it gets fixed.
Thank you. But I, I get the intent. It works.
Okay. So then, let's make the motion to drop an L. I couldn't sit up without my glasses.
Does everyone want to digest this a little bit more? Are we ready to?
Jose is wondering if he has time to not share the policy committee.
Carrie, I saw you last night. It was lovely. I don't know, the, the presidents, and not to, to, to get sidetracked, but that, that was a lovely event. That was great.
Okay, so, we have a motion that has been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Oh, and I.
Conry, I.
Constantine, I.
Elfin, by an I.
Green, I.
Boy, I.
Miller, I.
Okay, that motion passes.
Have to, when a colleague is coming for me now, I will try to jump back before the meeting ends.
Okay. It is six forty-two. Okay. Okay, great. Policy Chair, Policy and Governance Chair, let's look at the subcommittee reorganization policy. So, we don't run into this next year. Okay, so on to the next item. I would like to make a motion to appoint Jason McCandless, the District Secretary. I'll second a second first. And Julia seconds. Any discussion? Jose?
What does the, what is the, who, what is the District Secretary?
Jose, uh, uh, unlike, unlike the rest of you, I can't really turn down this nomination, although I, I'm questioning whether I want to keep the superintendent title, to be honest, after the last fifteen minutes. The, the secretary, this secretary to the board is the person that's responsible for making reports to the Department of Education. So, it's, it's, I'm, I'm the conduit between the elected school committee and the, the Department of Education. So, that's what this role is.
I think, isn't it also making sure that our, the minutes of our regular meetings get recorded somehow?
Yes, it is. It is. And that's, that's like, I, I, we actually have somebody else do it. I'm not doing it. But, but also under that umbrella is that there is a recorder of the minutes who, who does get back to the committee. Yep, that's a good question. Thank you.
No, no, I, again, you know, this is the start of my third year. I should, I should have known. Is there any examples of, of the superintendent not serving this role? I'm just curious about. Okay, this is.
None that I am aware of. None that I'm aware of. I, I think in my, this is my eighteenth time of being appointed the secretary to the, or, you know, to the, to the school committee. So, I, I think it's fairly common.
Thanks be to God.
And yet, we have to vote it annually. Why? Can't we just?
Can we make a motion that this?
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Oh, and I.
Conry, I.
Constantine, I.
Elfin, by an I.
Green, I.
Okay, that motion passes. Next up on the agenda is public comment. We did not have anyone email us regarding public comment. So, I will pause for a moment to see if there's anyone on this Zoom interested in making a comment on something on our agenda. Okay, no public comment. Approval of minutes, the October thirteenth, twenty twenty-two minutes. I would like to make a motion to approve the October thirteenth, twenty twenty-two minutes. Do I have a second?
Curtis, second.
Thank you, Curtis. Any discussion? All in favor?
Oh, and I.
Conry, I.
Constantine abstain.
Elfin, by an abstain.
Green, I.
Oh, I.
Okay, that motion passes. Okay, principal updates. Jake, is there a particular order that this needs to go on based on who we have?
We're, we're going to do the MCAS a little later on, under the superintendent's report umbrella. So, I think, I know that we have Nolan on and he's first on the agenda.
Okay.
And looks like Jake is on. So, I, I think we're okay to follow the agenda, Christina.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
So, first, under principal updates is the Lanesboro trip to Plymouth Museum. So, I will turn it over to Nolan.
Hey, good evening, everyone. I, I, do I have access to share my screen? I do. How about that? So, they went to Plymouth. They spent a lot of time in a longhouse learning what the lifestyles of the natives. They saw canoes. They also went to some old colonial houses, but the highlight was there's a, a reenactment of a battle. And the third graders loved it. They didn't stop talking about it for a couple of days. It was amazing. I don't know if you've ever seen a bunch of third graders leave for a field trip at, you know, six in the morning. But they have more energy than they do at lunch. It was impressive. But when they came home that night, they were exhausted. So, overall, they had a great opportunity to learn. So, it was a great trip.
Thanks, Nolan.
All right.
Any questions for Nolan? Carrie?
Yeah, so, what kind of thanks do we give to the donors who fund these kinds of trips? I think I've asked this before, but.
So, the, the, the donor wishes to remain anonymous. I have met him and I gave him a ton of thanks, but I think that's all he's looking for.
No, that's, that's what I wanted to know, is that you, you were able to thank him personally. That's great. Thank you.
No problem. Any other questions? I'll see you soon.
Thanks so much for the update. Jake, I think you're up next.
Right, good evening, folks. So, I think just lost the agenda. Is it the Ellis Shaver? So, annually, for as long as I can remember, the Ellis Shaver Foundation has been providing a five thousand dollar grant, very generous grant that we use for field trips. They, I believe their only ties is that they are based in, in Williamstown. We send them, I send them a note and a card every year thanking them for it. And we're, we're very appreciative for their generosity. We just, we just received their, their check a couple of weeks ago. And so, it's a, I'd love the committee to accept it so we can put it towards students going out, visiting places and exploring the world around us, near and far. And speaking about far, we have, our next two items are going to talk about some out of the country trips.
Okay, first, does anyone want to make a motion to approve that Alice Shaver Foundation donation? Julia? Julia made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Curtis seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Oh, and I.
Conry, I.
Constantine, I.
Elfin, by an I.
Green, I with gratitude.
Oh, I.
Thank you. That motion passes.
And Katie Pratt is actually here. And I will yield my time to her to talk about her stepping in to take over the reins for the, some of the planning that Lynn Jordan has previously done. So, Katie, floor is yours.
Thanks, Jake. Hi, everyone. My name's Katie Pratt. I'm one of the counselors in the high school. And I'm here to present to you about an international trip that I'm hoping to bring students on in the summer of twenty twenty-four. Lynn Jordan, one of our wellness teachers, has been taking wellness trips abroad for quite a few years now. She's retiring at the end of this year and was looking for somebody to take over the programming moving forward for students. And as an avid traveler myself, I was very interested in kind of taking up the reins. So, I'm proposing a trip to Panama in the summer of twenty twenty-four using the same company that Lynn has been using, EF Educational Tours. The trip would be after school is finished in the twenty twenty-four school year. It will leave sometime at the end of June, depending on snow days and when our true end of school day is. And will last eight days. There is a significant amount that is included in the cost of the, of the trip, including round trip airfare, hotel accommodation, most meals, a twenty-four seven tour director, transportation on tour, English-speaking local guides, all of our guided sightseeing, seeing and our entrance fees are included. The cost per student is three thousand three hundred eighty-nine dollars. If students register before the end of November, November twenty-fifth, they receive a two hundred dollar discount from the company itself. I'm interested in also pursuing fundraising for students who are interested in going on the trip, but who are not able to afford the trip out of pocket. There are a number of different possibilities, including one, helping students apply for the Global Citizens Scholarship that EF Tours offers to students to help fund trips abroad. I'm also interested in the information that Jake just shared with the committee as well. And I'm also interested in supporting students with local fundraising. I'd want to get some information from students who are interested in going on the tour to see who needs that support and how best to do it. We have quite a bit of time to really help with the fundraising efforts for students who may need it. And I'm interested in helping them do that. I guess, what, what questions do you have for me?
Ursula?
Yeah, so I obviously support this. I think it's awesome, but I just wanted to know that, looking at the form that was in the packet, it didn't specifically say anywhere that this was June of twenty twenty-four. And I was, I was confused because I knew this spring's trip was to Costa Rica. And I was like, oh, what changed? So, maybe just mention on there that it's next, you know, that it's for the following school year so that it's clear. But other than that, I think it's great.
Thank you.
Julia?
I don't know. I, I think this is an amazing opportunity and I share the desire to have our students have opportunities like this. Katie, I'm not sure if you know, but we did receive a concern from the public sent to the whole school committee about inequity and having trips like this that some kids can't participate in. And for that, I'm grateful that you're thinking about I, how to support fundraising. I also think that two years in advance sure helps that, even if, you know, it's just socking away a little bit of money each month is also, you know, is another way to think about it. And I think that there are probably a lot of families who would love to take their family to a place like Panama, but couldn't take their family, but could send one person. And so, I, I think a lot about that equity concern. And I feel like this, it is maybe splitting the difference and, and working towards making it possible for all. I, when you get to the point of fundraising requests or supporting students in their fundraising, I guess I would have questions about how how the school thinks about fundraising in a way that doesn't overtax partners of the school already and that there aren't competing requests going to similar places. And, and I worry that some, a lot of fundraising, you know, spaghetti dinners and car washes, like, they just don't make a lot of money. So, I'm just a little bit worried about overrelying on that. And, and I guess if there are ways to use things, use, use bigger sources, I want to encourage that. So, anyway, it's a long soliloquy about my concern around the equity of this. But I do think it's also really important for kids to get out of, out of our country and see the world.
Thank you, Julia. Carrie, your hand is up.
Yeah, so, I shared Julia's concern about equity. The superintendent and I were just at a conference that talked about equity for three days. And it's really, I think, on, on our minds. I share Julia's concerns about fundraising. I also have concerns about the way this is worded, that fundraising opportunities will be available for kids who can't afford it. Like, that's, it's just, that's our form, right? But I feel like that is, was that in the form or was that in written? And now I don't remember.
It's on a form.
Yeah. I just, I just wonder, do we track, you know, how many kids are going on these trips? I mean, which are the same groups of kids going on these trips year after year? Are the same families who can afford it sending their kids as opposed to families who can't afford it and don't even like bother? And the, just the fact that we're calling people out, well, if you can't afford this trip, you can fundraise. The, you did mention that the company you're working with offers scholarships. So, that is really encouraging and I would, I do applaud that. I sent the superintendent some information about a travel, education travel company that I talked to at the MASC, MASSS Conference on Equity. And they also offer scholarships. So, I do encourage, you know, the district to work only with companies that either offer scholarships or can connect students with other scholarship organizations. I don't think students or families should have to rate, you know, go fundraising in order to participate in these opportunities when their peers maybe don't have to. There's just, obviously, there is work in applying for scholarships as well. So, it's never going to be fully equitable, but anything we can do to you know, address that issue, I would, I would support. The other thing that we have heard feedback on from the community is why are we funding trips that are outside of the school? why are we funding trips that are outside of the school year? Right? If this is after the academic, after academic classes, why is the school committee sponsoring it? And I'm just wondering if colleagues on the committee have any thoughts about that.
Julia?
I think that's a really great question, Carrie. My, a- and Jake may have um, some understanding of this, uh, sorry, Jake. Either Jake might have some understanding of this. Um, but my recollection is that if we, if it's being discussed and advertised and promoted in the school, then it's connected to the school. And a- and um, if we approve it, then I think it's on our insurance. Like if something goes wrong, it's our liability insurance. So um, I I do think there's some legal elements there.
And and I I would just interject that I I think there are our schools and I, and I don't know, perhaps this school in the past that ran a sort of parallel tracks. There were school trips officially sanctioned, you know, underneath the umbrella squarely and deliberately at the school. Uh, but then there were parallel trips that were semi-advertised in the school. Um, the people running them were from the school. The people attending the trips were from the school. Um, to to me, the when of the trip, I mean, our our students are our students for three hundred and sixty-five days a year. So so the when can be about a number of things, including the the expense versus the the expense of traveling at different points of the year. It it is also driven by just the reality of, as I, as I continue to hear the tears of the soccer game, how how busy and how involved and how engaged students are for the one hundred eighty days that they're actually with us during the official school year. So our, we we have been making a real effort over the last two and a half years to to not have parallel tracks of trips. That if it is a trip that involves s- our staff and and our students, then it must be our trip. Um, and and must come before this body in order to have approval. And um, the 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 calendar of the trip, I think we you know, we we could certainly have a bigger conversation about that, but but we are in the process of trying to bring two parallel tracks in into one single track that is part of the school district's program and part of the Mount Greylock Regional School Program.
So I guess I wonder if we can look at this differently, funding these these expensive trips, right? The other application, I think, um, mentions the C Fund, right? Can can we maybe as a district look at uh, school, these kinds of school trips kind of the way we look at athletic clubs, right? So that if you're ra- if the athletic club is raising money, they're doing a booster. I mean, it's for the whole team. It's not specific to a student. And if, um, if there were some way to really support international education, if we're gonna own it, we should own it, right? You know, kids just shouldn't have to raise money to go um, as an individual kid. I I just feel so strongly about that. Sorry.
Julia?
I'll just second that. I love that idea. Um, that this is the cost of a trip for X number of people is Y. And we need to put our, who wants to go, let's put our heads together and figure out how we're gonna make it happen. Eh, I love that.
Jose?
I I I like it, I think, uh, in principle. I do wonder how it could be put into practice. You know, imagine there are fifteen students who express interest. And that's fifteen times three thousand, you know, in terms of what what the cost would be to to take that cohort of students abroad. Unless we engage in some sort of means testing, you know, evaluation, it's hard to know how best to support the students who actually need the support um, versus, you know, families who who may need it less, let's put it that way. And so what I don't know is is uh, if we were to do this in practice, and let's imagine not all of the costs are supported or covered by the, the fundraising activity that their, you know, students will have to bear or families will have to bear some cost. Does that cost then borne equally across all families? And and if not, you know, what what happens then? You know, it's it's not obvious to me what what to, what to do.
Yeah, I agree. It's definitely complicated. I mean, um, you throw in a sliding scale in terms of of, you know, need and and means. Um, I don't know what that would look like. Jake?
Christina and everyone, I I I am totally with you on this. I, and and this is not to say that we're not going to approach this conversation thoughtfully and deliberately. M- my experience would suggest that if trip sponsors are expected to be also serious um, and dedicated fundraising experts, that we will wind up taking no trips um, because of the time and responsibility and just straight up hassle involved. And the the actual outcome and unintended consequence could be that families who can afford to travel are going to travel anyway. Um, we could quickly go from our, our trying to merge into one system where these kinds of trips are under our umbrella back to the families that can do it, will organize it, and they will have wonderful times. And and it will be sort of a club. I don't know if what I'm sa- saying makes sense, but but I do, I do have a concern that um, we just have to approach this really thoughtfully and make sure it does not become a a completely undue burden to whoever is good enough to put themselves out there to sponsor a trip. That was really one of the reasons I felt so strongly about bringing all of the trips in under the official school committee umbrella and school district umbrella. It's a tremendous amount of liability that somebody is taking on to take other people's treasures to another country or to another city even for that, for that matter. So I I am very appreciative and and with this entire conversation and spirit, I just would want to be very careful that that we're approaching it in a way that it's still doable. It's still attractive for teachers and staff members to be trip sponsors. And that we don't wind up creating a scenario where it's just not worth it. Thus, only those who were going to be able to travel anyway are able to travel. Thank you for that entertaining, that interruption.
Jose, it looks like you have your hand up.
Yeah, he- hearing Jake speak, me give me, give me pause and and maybe question whether I had anything useful to say, which which is probably to be questioned always. But um, this, this, my my thoughts return to, I think, Carrie's concerns that she shared with us about uh, the district providing educational opportunities for a small subset of the students in our district, simply because of uh, differences in the ability for families to to afford these educational opportunities. That that bothers me and uh, it bothers me, you know, and whether it bothers me enough that I would not be supportive of our district supporting these kinds of educational opportunities for our students. But, you know, it it it's definitely given me pause.
Thanks, Jose, Julia.
Um, so I appreciate Jake, you're kind of laying out what the alternatives are. Um, and the alternatives, I I mean, I think what we're all probably, well, I'll speak for myself. What I know I struggle with is the inequity in our society and what role our district plays in either amplifying it or um, calling attention to it, or in what ways we can reduce it. And I think the reality is we, we are limited in what we can do to reduce it. And um, and Jake, I appreciate, you know, so I I'm uncomfortable with it, but I guess I I agree, Jake. Quite honestly, at Bart, we said, great, figure out how to fundraise it, fundraise for it, and they never went anywhere. You know, every year there was a new group of kids who tried to go somewhere and they never went anywhere because they didn't have, it's very difficult for it to ask employees to take that on. So I I a hundred percent agree with you, Jake, on that. And I also agree that it's gonna happen anyway. And so if it's gonna happen in a less safe way, because we haven't then what are we doing, you know? I I the the idea of bringing it under our umbrella, so at least if it's gonna happen, we can make sure it happens in as safe a way as possible, um, makes me feel a little bit better. And I don't like it. I don't like the inequities in our society and I don't like the difference in access. Um, and so I'm, I'm left very uncomfortable and I yet ready to approve it, so.
Did you want to make a motion, Julia?
Oh, gosh, we haven't had a motion. I'll make the motion.
So, um, do we need to do these as two separate trips? Yeah, okay. So are you making a motion to approve the out-of-country trip to Panama?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a second? Curtis seconds. Any further discussion? Carrie?
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out what I wanna say about this. I have a question for you, Katie. Um, and thank you, by the way, for your work on this. I I don't want the, it to seem um, like I'm I'm grateful for for that. I do support giving kids the opportunity to explore the world, right? And for some of these kids, it may be the only opportunity they have to explore the world. So I'm very aware of that as well. So my question is, um, or one of the few opportunities, I'm gonna say that, is is the fee for going on this kind of trip per student um, significantly lower? Because it's an educational trip than it would be if a student were just, you know, I it might be hard to actually assess this, but is there an educational break in the fee? That's, I guess, what I'm asking in terms of travel, what this would normally look like.
I don't know what a, like a trip like this would typically look like. Uh, I think part of the fee is def- it's definitely, I think, expensive to travel abroad. And I think that part of what we're paying for is having a company that provides all of the wraparound services in actually working with all of the the vendors in the country that we're going to, having the twenty-four-seven access to the tour director, having um, the emergency services that can be provided to us if something were to happen abroad. So I think if a student were to try and make this happen themselves, um, it could potentially be cheaper. I I I think it could. Hmm, I think it could. Um, I don't know if students have the s- the skills to do that. So I I do think, I do think we probably are paying more to have it all prepared for us and have that kind of security while we're there. I do.
Yeah, I was, I was just gonna add to that. I looked at, um, I thought about going on this year's trip with my daughter. And, you know, if it was twenty-five-hundred for her and it was twenty-five-hundred for me and you're over five thousand dollars for two people, which I think for a week is actually a lot. And I'm not saying it's unreasonable based on everything that you get, but I don't think it's cheap and same with, you know, Panama's even more. So I definitely don't think, I mean, I'm sure, you know, you're getting the services and the food and the support and everything you just mentioned, but I certainly don't think that, it didn't seem to me like it was less expensive than, you know, taking a vacation yourself, right? Just my opinion.
Carrie, I've done a cost analysis a couple times. Why, I used to take students traveling abroad through um, not this company, but there was a, a one of their sister companies and uh, multiple years. And typically, it is, it was cheaper um, when you consider the 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 fees, um, airfare, um, you know, lod- lodging and your food. All those things would typically add up and it was typically cheaper. But this was, you know, over, over ten years ago. Um, but uh, that that had been my experience.
Thanks, Jake. Jose?
Thank you, Christina. I'll just, I'll just be brief here, just to m- maybe provide some context for my thinking and my eventual vote. But, you know, I think, you know, Carrie's concerns still are just, are just resounding in my mind right now about uh, what our mission is as a district, which I think we make very clear. Um, you know, we're in the the business of, of educating all the kids in our district um, as fairly as equally and as equitably as possible. And I think supporting these trips provides a service. The district is providing a service for a subset of students in our, in our districts and our, in our communities. Um, and we would be clearly alienating or excluding children from this educational opportunity. I think that that is what, supporting these trips. I think, I think that's what they communicate and I think this would be a mount to.
Julia?
So the the thing that catches me is if this is gonna happen anyway, like they, maybe they're more expensive, but they're safe. Um, and if we're gonna ask, um, now, because we're not asking, but if somebody's gonna volunteer, if Katie is gonna, you know, kindly volunteer, I would certainly want her to be in a position where she has all those supports around her when she's with, as Jake calls, you know, described them, somebody else's treasures. But I guess I wonder, are we as a district? And so so I was leaning to say yes, because I, it's better than the alternative in my mind of people trying to cobble something together and do it unsafely um, outside of school. Um, or without the kind of oversight or support that, uh, you know, the district ends up giving. Um, but are we able as a s- as a district to disallow, like that parallel track you were talking about, Jake? Like, is there any way we can say to all the faculty and staff, you're not allowed to engage in these things?
I eh, I don't, I don't think so. We we can control what we're able to control, which is we, we can not advertise it through the school. We cannot be a vehicle for sending information home. Um, particularly trips that happen outside, eh eh, outside of school time. We really have zero rights to tell an individual human being where they can go and can't go and what they can do and what they can't do. I would, as a good colleague, suggest, man, if you're willing to go with a dozen teenagers to a different country and take on that, that magnificent amount of liability, um, you are a much better person than I am, or at least a braver person, if not better. And that, that was really one of the first conversations I had when I got here and realized this dual track was running was, was grave concern. First, first of all, you know, of equal importance for the individuals that were doing this because they are putting themselves in tremendous peril. And second of all, for the district maybe being in a position to turn a blind eye to knowing it was happening and it was kind of advertised within the school, but not really. And and parents or guardians might might be excused if they felt like it was a schoolish trip. Um, so so, you know, it's, it it is from somebody charged with protecting the school district's interests, including, you know, not only the physical well-being of our students, but but the, the, all all kinds of well-being of the staff. the, all, all kinds of wellbeing of the staff and students. It would be better to run no trips at all as a school district and let this exist completely outside if, if we can't figure out a way to do it. It, it's, it's really challenging. I, Pittsfield has the exact same conversation, not to invoke another school district. It's the exact same conversation with every single travel abroad trip that comes up, because we are trying to figure out a solution for something that's actually much bigger than us. So I, I admire the conversation and, and I'm willing to continue on with the conversation, but it, it, it does seem to me like I, I think our high school students and their families could look around at all of the other high schools in the Commonwealth and reasonable, reasonably expect that we help facilitate travel abroad, as do most high schools across the Commonwealth. And, and so finding a way to do that with, with complete equity i- is, is a really worthy goal that I'm with you, we should continue to pursue. I, I would not advocate that we stop doing this altogether until we have a solution to a very, very complex problem. Unless, unless one among us was the Powerball winner earlier this week. So, yeah.
So can, oh, I'm sorry, Jose, you were first.
Thanks, uh, I said, get my hand lowered here. You know, I'm, I'm, I'm struggling. My sense says, is if we as a school committee believe that providing this kind of educational opportunity was important to us successfully carrying out our mission. Then this seems like something we should be budgeting for if international experiences for our students was of such high value and importance to our district. And this is something we should be going to our towns for, you know, to ask for funding for. You know, when I signed my seventh grader up for extracurricular activities, you know, there is a, a fee that I'm asked to pay, but we also provide an opportunity for families to, for, for students to, to participate if their families don't have the, the needs to pay. I think this is something that clearly are, you know, my, my sense is this, if we want to do this the right way, then this is something that we need to be going to our respective communities and, and, and having a conversation about. You know, is this something that we, as, as folks who, who want the best for our kids, is this something that we're, we're, we're willing to, to try to provide opportunities for all of our kids to engage in this kind of, in this kind of learning?
Carrie?
Yeah, just, I think one more comment or question. What is the actual process? Do we ask students for their ability to pay right up front, or do we just assume that everyone can pay and that they, if they can't, they'll come to you and talk about fundraising? Like, is it on the child? Is it on the student to come to you and say, hey, we can't, I really want to go, my family can't afford this. Can you help me fundraise for it? Is that the dynamic that we're looking at?
I would, I would say yes. So that when, when families sign up for the trip initially, like on the, on EF's website, they're required to put a deposit and sign a guarantee that they are going, they're committing to, to this money. So I, I'm hoping to do a significant amount of, I think, just advertising and, and speaking with individual students. And I would, I would probably want, I, I would probably want every family to reach out to me before they enroll, no matter what their situation is. Just to confirm with me kind of their status and their needs, so I can figure out how to best support him, them. So I haven't, I haven't gotten to that far in the process yet, but I think asking the family is actually to reach out to me first with kind of their feelings before enrollment is probably the best way to go about it, so that everybody's doing the same thing.
Right. Okay. I have further questions about the administrative part of it, but I'm not gonna ask those now. I am gonna support this because I am also mindful that there is a reason to move forward with it. And many reasons, there are more reasons to move forward with it than to, to not. But I do think there are improvements that can be made in the form, in the administrative aspects of it, and perhaps even in the advertising of it. And that's all administrative, that's not our role. I am going to put some faith in, in Katie and in the administration to be mindful of our discussion and do what you can to help make this as equitable as possible. The process.
Thank you, Carrie.
Yeah.
Okay. We have a motion from Julia that was seconded by Curtis. All in favor?
Oh, and I.
Conry, I.
Constantine, no.
Elfin, by an I.
Me, and I.
Oh, I.
Okay, thank you. That motion passes. Julia, did you want to make a second motion?
Happy to. That we approve the next trip on the list.
Okay, do I have a second? Ursula, seconds. Any discussion on that trip? Julia?
Can I just say ditto?
Yeah, all of the conversation.
All become ditto the conversation. Yes.
We'll have the minute take a repeat everything we just said in the minutes. We'll accept it no other format.
So, so this one is even more expensive. Is Tom on the?
Tom is, Tom is not here tonight.
Okay. I know this has been in the works for a while, is that right? Or he,
He's been thinking about for a while. So we do offer one of our social science, history electives is Vietnam. And so it's been something that he's been thinking about for quite some time. And just since we are sort of investigating and, and merging these two tracks, he wanted to bring it, bring it forth for consideration. And is excited and he'd be happy to come back to discuss the, you know, the details and intent of the trip. If it pleases the board or the committee, but yeah. So I mean, the, the Vietnam course, you know, they, they look at that period of American history in the sixties, examine civil rights, counter course, counter, counter culture, Vietnam. And how that have, has influenced us and, and our government even to today.
It's sorry, Julie, do you mind if I just follow up? Is there a requirement that students either take or have taken the Vietnam course in order to go on the trip?
I think he is waiting to see what the interest is yet, because, you know, at first we need approval from the committee officially before we, we start sort of getting signups. So I anticipate there, there could be sort of a priority list. I could see there being, you know, you, it would, you know, you would need to have taken the, the class first. However, and again, this is just me thinking out loud. We know when there's more students typically that take trips, the price of the trip goes down. That's been my experience in the, in the past too. So it, nothing has been set, Carrie, but I could see us having the discussion and trying to figure out what the best way to, to go about it would be. So if, if you care, care to vote on, on this now, that, that'd be great. Or if you'd like to wait for an update from Tom, he'd be more than happy to, to come back.
Julia, did you have a question?
I did. So first, just a comment. My, my personal preference would be that this does come back up. I know I'm always the one harping on shorter agendas, but Katie's had the ability to listen to our machinations. And I guess I would want to know that Tom was able to also hear all of our concerns. And maybe if he just watches this video, you know, I don't know, we can figure that out. But the other question I have is, I'm just thinking about what it would, like, it's one thing in the summer when all the kids go away and they have an experience and it's the summer and they come back and they're not all in the same classroom. I guess I'm, to Carrie's question, what made, what it made me think about is what's the impact on the classroom culture? When a number of the kids have gone away and been to the place and like, I'm, I'm more worried about the inequity, I guess, with this one, not just from the price perspective, but also, and, and that's ironic, right? Because this is an opportunity to directly see what it is that you've been studying and connect to it at a deeper level. But I'm, I'm worried about the, the culture of the classroom where that difference is going to be even clearer. And I guess just what that impact is.
I mean, we see, I see that impact. Often, a lot of our students have tons of cultural, cultural capital and many of our students don't. You know, they've never left the, the, the town or the county.
I understand that, but I guess when the topic that is the very topic that is being studied and a group from that class go and come back, that's like a, a, like really stark.
Yeah, no, I, I agree. I think that's a, an example of everything we just discussed for the past half hour. You know, and ditto, like.
Jose?
Thanks Christina. I just follow up from, you know, Julia's comment. I think, I think it's a valid concern. And I think it would be important for, certainly for me to hear from from Tom, how this potential experience wouldn't exacerbate inequities, either in his classroom or, you know, in, in the general learning experience. I do think, although, you know, we, we clearly moved on from the, the Panama trip, you know, I can see inequities built in there in terms of when students return from the classroom or return from this trip with an additional opportunity for, for instance, you know, language immersion, you know, practicing Spanish abroad. You know, they're clear, clearly it's, it's baked into every aspect of these trips. The fact that there's going to be a majority of students who will not have the ability to participate, learn, and then return from these trips, being able to practice and engage more deeply in the things that they learned while being abroad.
Yeah, I know there's a, there's a language, language trip in the, in the infancy planning stages right now too. So that's, that's on the horizon.
Okay, any further discussion?
Did, did we have a motion on this?
We did.
Yeah. Do you have any interest in retracting the motion? I'm just wondering if we want to postpone it to the next.
I made the motion and I would like to have Tom come back, so I'm gonna retract my motion.
Ursula, are you okay with that? Okay. So we will find a time where it makes sense to put this on a shorter meeting agenda, so we can have a nice lengthy discussion. Thank you. Okay. So moving on to the next agenda item. Thank you Katie and Jake and Nolan. I think you're still out there. We have a curriculum director update from Joelle Brookner.
Hi there, I'm gonna share my screen. Can you see? Excellent. Okay, I'm going to be brief. And I have the distinct pleasure of just giving you a little update on Dr. Samranji Singh's recent visit to our district. And I have a cup, it's only three slides, I promise it's not a lot. But I wanted to give you a little recap. He was here October 27th and 28th and he did work in all three of our schools. He did two assemblies at each of the elementary schools by grade. And at those assemblies, the focus was his book. He read Fozia Singh Keeps Going, The True Story of the Oldest Person to Ever Run a Marathon. There's a photo there of him that happens to be at Williamstown Elementary School. He projected the slides, the illustrations from the book. He read the book and then he took lots of questions. He, and I was, I'm gonna say the same thing about the middle high school, but I was so impressed. I went to all of the presentations and I was so impressed with the questions that children asked, you know, typically in kindergarten, second grade, you get questions like, what's your favorite color? And those kinds of things that children are interested in. But honestly, the first question that was asked was, how many languages is this book translated into? And it was phenomenal. And it just got better from there. He did three assemblies at Mount Greylock and we had talked a lot about whether he wanted to have everybody in one big group. We ended up landing on three groups and it was kind of because of scheduling, but we were really happy that we did. Those assemblies were incredibly powerful. He shared his personal stories of encountering racism and, and how he responded. And the students asked incredibly pointed, honest questions. It was, they, it was really moving. He then met after school with GMSU. I was not at that meeting, but I know that they talked a lot about one of the students on the GMSU asked a question, one of the sessions about like, if you could change something, anything about public education, what would it be? So I know they had some discussions like that. It was really great. He, on the Friday, he had a half day workshop with all of our pre-K through 12th grade faculty and staff. And it was, you know, we've done lots of kind of trainings on DEI issues and this was that, but his approach was really different. He really focused on connections and fostering connections with the people in the room and really getting people to reflect on their own process and place where they are and how they can do the same with their students. It was really great. And he did kind of, he started with the faculty and staff by asking people to get up and go find somebody they didn't know and have a conversation. And then he, he would kind of do a round robin, but you could never repeat yourself. And it was, people loved it. I think everybody, it was refreshing on all kinds of levels, but he was really well received. Then we had a community evening presentation, which was called Talking to Kids About Racism. And we were all, all of our administrative team was holding our breath because we usually don't get great turnout for things in the evening. You know, if it's a, if it's an a play or a concert or a sporting event, we get great turnout, but for, we just haven't had a great track record getting people out for these kinds of events. And so I think Jake should's counted. I think all in all, we had 75 people, which was fabulous. We were so happy. And I was thrilled because there was representation from all of our schools. But there were also plenty of people in the, in the audience who have no children in the school. Many of them used to, but some haven't in many, in decades. So it was a really interesting mix of people. We had school committee members there, which we were grateful for as well. Some of the takeaway, we also, our administrative team got to have lunch with him also. And that was a great, a great thing for us to do because we realized that we don't think we've ever had someone come and speak to, to work with every single person in our district. I don't think that's ever happened. So he had this unique perspective of seeing all of the students, all of the faculty and staff, all of our administrative team, and got to meet with families, caregivers, community. And this quote at the top, he wrote to me as soon as he got home and he just said, you know, you have a lot of cohesion in your community already and there's so much potential and it's a real gift. And he was able to see that. He also really wanted to call out that, you know, students here at all levels are really thinking about issues of racism and social justice. They are. And I know that sometimes, um, there's a thought process that, you know, we have to be careful what we say to students in school. And we, but he, his point was, you know, we need to do a better job keeping up with the kids because the students, this is where they live, this is where they are. And, um, that was so apparent through all of the presentations. Their feedback we've gotten, there's a strong desire to keep the conversations going. There's, it's the desire among students, desire, we had emails from students. We had students email questions to Jake Schutz, which I then sent to Dr. Singh, which he then answered. You know, people want to talk. We've gotten feedback from families saying, this was great, let's do it again. He absolutely will come back. He loved being here. And I think he has a lot to offer. And then another thing that we talked about, and I don't really have anything to share about it, but we were, as our administrative team at lunch with him, we were talking about ways that we can create leadership opportunities around social justice issues, yes, but just even just empowering more students at all ages to be really active community members and to be able to engage in thought processes like this. So we're really looking forward to continuing the work. And we're really grateful again to Williams College for helping support us, um, in getting him here. And we just, it's really exciting because I think it's the beginning of a very exciting partnership. And I'm happy to, I'm gonna unshare my screen. Happy to take any questions or comments, because I know some of you were there.
Thank you, Joelle. Any questions from the committee for Joelle? I see Ursula's hand and then Carrie.
Not a question, just a comment. I, um, my seventh grader was telling me about the presentation and he's usually a man of few words. I don't get much, but he obviously was very touched or, you know, moved by the presentation, told me some stories about things the speaker had said and it was obviously very impactful. So I just wanted to let you know.
Thank you. I was really excited because there were several parents who came to that evening because their student had told them about it when they got home from school. And that was the, they hadn't intended to come and their kid said, you gotta go.
Awesome. Carrie, you were next and then Julia.
Yeah, I'll just add to what Joelle said, um, that not only did parents come, but they shared with the audience what their kids had asked, right? So, um, and the parents were quite surprised by the maturity of the questions that their kids had posed to the speaker. So it was a really engaging event in the evening. I also went to the afternoon session that, um, he did on campus, um, with some of the Williams students, which was, um, equally engaging. And from what I understand, he was just, um, very, um, he connected with each of the audiences in a different way. I actually talked to the superintendent about it at the evening session that just no, no one conversation with a class or a grade or a, an audience was quite the same. That's remarkable.
Thank you, Carrie. Julia.
Thank you, Joelle, for sharing all of this. It is such a heartwarming story, uh, heartwarming experience for you to share with us. And I'm sorry I missed it, I was away at a conference. I was really disappointed. I, I, one thing, I just, I love the power of storytelling. You can only, when you really get to know someone and it sounds like that's what he was doing is, um, really connecting with the audiences. It's really easy to start to look past the ways in which you might be different and the ways in which, in fact, we're all human. So I really appreciate hearing about those kinds of connections you were describing. I'm, I'm wondering, not because I hope or anticipate or think this could be true, but I just wonder if you've received any pushback, um, given that we've received in, you know, emails in the past about, um, concern about anything about race. So I'm just wondering if you'd received any pushback.
I, I am happy to jump in as, as one of the people that often is the, the receiver of that. The, the, the only, the only negative feedback I had around the entire, the entire event was that, um, I felt strongly enough about, um, Dr. Singh's appearance to do a, a district-wide telephone call and email. And I had a couple of families reach out and say, when the telephone rings and it's an all, it, it, I, you know, that, that, that it was disconcerting to them because, you know, I think there was a, a tragedy at a school several days before this. And I think there were some folks who, when the phone rings at a, at an off time and it's a district-wide call. And that, that was actually, uh, wasn't even criticism. It was just, uh, something for you to think about in future. And, and, but, but in terms of the actual, uh, in terms of what Dr. Singh spoke about and the information he shared and, uh, I have had, and I think Joelle, you know, would, would second this, as would the principals. Not a single ounce of feedback really, other than how powerful it was and what a, what a remarkable time together it was. And, and I, I would just take the opportunity to say very grateful to, to Shayna Adams Zawgobly, who, who, who made this connection for us like two and a half years ago. And to, we, we've been talking about this with, with, you know, Patsy and, uh, with Patsy White and Shayna and Joelle and I, we've been talking about this for, for, well, probably to you since November of 20. And, um, we all felt so strongly, this was not a Zoom event, that we needed to be in the same room. And so, and we felt that strongly because Simran felt that strongly. And, um, and it was, it was just wonderful. Joelle, it was a massive amount of organizing to get the timings right. Uh, and it, it was wonderful. Then very grateful to Joelle, very grateful to Shayna, very grateful to all the folks. It was all, it also marked the first time that we had our entire district staffs together. Due to the pandemic, so having everybody together in the auditorium at Mount Greylock and then having the time with him that we had after we took note of the fact that was the first time we've gathered as a regional district team just felt like magic. Thank you.
Thank you, Jake. Any other questions for Joelle? Thank you so much, Joelle.
Thanks for having me.
Um, Jake, in the interest of time and the folks that are here, um, if the committee is amenable, did you want to, um, move some agenda items?
I would, I would love to do two things. One, I would like to take item 10 and just push it off. It's, it's just simply not a conversation I'm interested in having this evening. And then I would request if we could move the part of my report that is around MCAS up. So our principals can, can not be kept any longer than we need to keep them. If we may, and, and I will, I will really hustle through my piece of the MCAS presentation. I don't know if you have to vote on those things or not, but that.
I think the committee can just say they're amenable to those changes. Sounds like they are amenable.
Good, good. So I'm going.
Jose, did you have a question?
Well, only because I, I, item 10, my hope, well, I don't know, I don't know what discussion would look like, but I do feel a little bit of eagerness, I was going to say anxiety, but eagerness to get, to get, to have, to get that conversation. We've got a vote scheduled for that. You know what, it's not anxiety or eagerness, I'm, I'm excited to have that conversation, Jake. And, and I, I'm happy to have it moved, uh, to later in the agenda. And then, and then we can wait and see, you know, depending on, on time and energy, whether, whether we, whether we can talk about it tonight. But that would be my.
I, I would, I would like some time to reflect on the request that I made that is bringing that agenda item forward. And I do think we have this tentatively as an agenda item for our November 17th meeting, for the joint meeting between the full committee and the track and field committee. I would just, I mean, you all can discuss whatever you want to discuss. I'm not, I probably will not be participating if we, if we go ahead and do item 10 this evening. Or I would prefer not to. So, um, but I, but I definitely would like to get the MCAS.
Okay. And just to confirm, Jake, it sounds like you would like some time to reflect more about this agenda item before.
I would like everybody to have some time, yes. Yeah, I think, uh, yes, that's it. Very simple. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you. I am going to pull up my, if I can find it, from my 80,000 tabs that I have open. I think this is the right thing. I'm just gonna find the right spot to, to get into MCAS. And, um, I, I'm gonna go through my piece very, very quickly. You have access to this, uh, report in draft form, school committee. And, um, it will certainly be up for the public and will replace it actually with just a couple of little changes that I made between getting it into the packet and now. My, my focus on the MCAS before we hand over to, to my three wonderful colleagues, our principals from our three, uh, three schools, was just really to focus in on, on student growth percentiles. You know, it's been about a decade since the state started down this path of looking not only at how is a student performing, um, compared to the objectives of the test, but looking at students for what kind of growth are we seeing in that individual student compared to like scoring students? And, um, there's a, there's a brief explanation of what the student growth percentiles mean here. Growth that is the first percentile through the 39th percentile is generally considered lower growth. Forty through 60, those, that percentile range is moderate growth. And 61 through 99 is, is generally considered higher growth. And of course, it's really impossible to, to grow at, at a, at a better clip than the 99th percentile. So I'm, we're just gonna take a quick look at where we were as a, as a district or where we are as a district, grade by grade with growth percentiles. And, and then we're gonna hand over to, to the three principals to look at, at, you know, where, where their focus is going to be. And, and then just sort of a general wrap up of where we are with MCAT. So when we look at our fourth graders, there, our mean student growth percentile was 44, which is sort of at the, at the lower end of moderate growth in ELA. And it was low growth, the standard growth percentile of, of being as a group of fourth graders at the 31st percentile. That's their average, their mean, um, for that. And the way these charts work is you can see, you know, just going through the ELA, 30% of our students in the fourth grade were in a very low student growth percentile rating as opposed to 15% who are in a very high rating. So that's how these work going across. So we, we look at the scores, we look at the students' performance level, but we also really try to focus in and zero in on looking at, you know, taking this from the grade level across the district, which in this case is comprised of two schools. We then take a look at this on an individual basis and begin to, to work toward why is this individual student not experiencing growth that is equal to, to that of, of their peers? And so that's really what these growth percentiles mean. When you look at them, uh, you know, in terms of grade by grade, moving on to, to grade five, you can see that our mean student growth percentile in ELA was 51, at the 51st percentile. For math, it was at the 49th. So really right here in the middle of where like scoring students from previous MCAS tests across the entire Commonwealth scored. So, you know, feeling more comfortable with those, with those growth percentiles that are in the 40s and the 50s. And really just gonna quickly give you a look at, at where we are across the district. In grade six, the mean student growth percentile was a 68 in English Language Arts. You can see that, that 10% of students were considered to have very low growth between grade five and grade six. And grade five would be reflective of fourth grade tests and third grade tests. Whereas 45% of our students across the district in our two elementary schools were considered very high growth, which is, um, I believe this is our highest mean SGP. Sixth grade math, a little lower, um, a little more of an even distribution a, a, around where students were scoring. But, but still growth at what Desi would consider an acceptable rate. Really, Desi's looking for that 40, 40th percentile and above. And, and again, taking this down into individual classes and individual students gives us an idea of, of where and with whom particular focus needs to be, particular remediation in some places, particularly, particular addressing of gaps in other places. When you get this down to an individual student level and, and, and families, parents, guardians, caretakers do get individual growth reports on their students. Grade seven, you can see the mean SGP in, uh, English Language Arts was 60. This is the low end of the scale for high growth and 47 are moderate growth, almost right in the middle for, for seventh grade mathematics. Eighth grade, we see English ELA was, was really right in the middle, a fairly even distribution. Again, looking at, at eighth grade math, low student growth percentile, although the higher part of the low range. But again, what, what is of particular note to principals and to classroom teachers who now have these students as ninth graders? Is that there, there are more than a third of these students were growing at a, at a slower clip than, at a, at a much lower clip than their, than their eighth grade peers, now ninth grade peers across the Commonwealth. And that's, that's problematic and something that we have to address. Whereas only 4% of those students were, were really, not only very likely performing at very high levels, but also growing and learning at a, at a faster rate than their peers across the state. And then in 10th grade, again, we're about in the middle of the, uh, in the middle, 45 moderate growth between that eighth grade test and 10th grade test for our students. Um, a little bit heavy at, at this end of very low growth in, in mathematics, interestingly enough. And I think 10th grade math showed up in some interesting ways on this test. I believe 10th grade math actually is, is one of the very few areas where our students as a whole, as, as 10th graders actually performed better on the tw- spring of 22 MCAS than they did the, the last time the full MCAS was given in, in, uh, in, in 2019. So, you know, trying to wrap our heads around what that means and what it means for whom is, is really important work. So, y- you know, I, 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 I know we really hustled through those growth pieces, but I, the principals are all going to focus more on, on performance levels. I, I think it is really important to, to step back and consider that. You know, we, we work with three-year-olds, we work with students that are 18 and in some cases. You know, we we work with three year olds, we work with students that are eighteen and in some cases nineteen, twenty, twenty one, twenty two. What we really, when we when we step back from what the MCAS is and some of the complaints and concerns about putting so much weight onto a standardized task. What we're really looking for with our students is growth. And is a positive trajectory overall. Over their thirteen, over their twelve or thirteen or fourteen or fifteen years with us in the case of some students. Uh, and and so I have always found as a leader. It's very important to look at all aspects of the in uh, MCAS, including looking at um, you know, individual item analysis and individual item analysis for students and cohorts of students. But it's also very important to go back and refocus on the fact that we wanna see a positive trajectory for students. We wanna see it socially, we wanna see it emotionally, we wanna see it in terms of their maturity, we wanna see it in terms of their grit. And their um, ability to um. Not have things go exactly the way they want them to go, but keep unplugging with support. Uh, we also wanna see it academically, that there's a forward um, movement. So we we, this year's growth data gave us some some interesting data to to wrap our heads and hearts around as we try to help students. Move forward in the areas that are measured by the MCAS. Um, some general observations about the MCAS before we hand over to Nolan, and I think the order this evening would would be Nolan and then Cindy and then uh, Jake. We we definitely have some apparent gaps, um, as we always do. It would be easy to say it's all pandemic. It's not all pandemic. There are pieces of the gaps that are about the fact that we instituted a brand new ELA curriculum uh, last year. That in and of itself creates some gaps. There's definitely some gaps that that are for individual students likely created by the pandemic. And then there's just the gaps that it's what our teachers do. Kids learn in different ways, students learn at different paces. And so our teachers are well positioned to identify. The MCAS a very powerful tool for helping us do that. To identify and help support and address across those gaps to get students really where they need to be by the time they. The tenth grade graduation and beyond. I I would suggest it's been interesting, those of you, this is a little bit inside baseball, but I think it's really important. Um, the National Assessment of Educational Process, which is sort of. The nation's report card, I believe, is the uh, is is the 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 phraseology that gets used about the NAEP. And sometimes we participate in the NAEP, you're invited in to participate in the NAEP, sometimes we are not. I do not believe we we specifically were NAEP participants. Um, in the twenty two NAEP. I'm not sure who from Berkshire County was. But it, but I would suggest that you, uh, even if you just Google NAEP and New York Times. Um, very interesting article that looks across the country. Uh, with specifically through a pandemic infused lens about what um. What this all means. There there were a couple of areas, there were, there was some areas where for the first time in like thirty years nationally. We went backwards in terms of what the NAEP measures, I believe, in mathematics. Uh, it's interesting, the New York Times article, I'm not a salesperson for the New York Times, please believe me, but it's just, it's just a great resource in this case. You you can actually look state by state, and then, of course, through the through the NAEP website, uh, you you can actually dig in with a little more granular data. If you have the time and the interest. Um, going back to MCAS and away from the NAEP, the Mount Greylock Regional School District stayed. Well above state averages in, I believe, every area or almost every area. That is absolutely what we should expect. Um, get given the students that we serve, given the communities we serve. Given the resources that our towns afford us to do that servant hood. Um, we should be above state averages and we are. Um, the Mount Greylock Regional School District, I think we compare very favorably, uh, it, you know, neck and neck, sometimes a little below, a little above is measured by the MCAS. With like districts across the Commonwealth, districts that demographically look like us, districts that spend like us. Districts that invest like us. Um, and I think we 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 do very well with the folks in Berkshire County against whom that we compare ourselves as well. And I and I would, you know, suggest to everybody watching this and folks out in the community, the the. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed, School and District Profiles have a wealth of information that. That allow you to look in more detail into our performance, but also if you're of a mind to to compare. The performance of our students, our educators, our schools, our district against against those of our neighbors near and far. As always, um, I I am not somebody that joins in the chorus of needing to eliminate MCAS or wanting to eliminate MCAS. And and that that chorus gets louder and softer depending on the times. I think the MCAS has done more to drive academic equity over the. Couple of decades that it's been in existence. Than almost any single tool that I can think of. It provides us very valuable information. It gives our educators very valuable information. It gives uh, parents, guardians and caretakers very valuable information to help them make. Crucial crucial decisions. And so um, I for one will weigh in and say, I continue to be grateful to to the Commonwealth for um. The for the care and the caution and the seriousness with with which they take our state assessment system. And um, and also, you know, as evidenced by the fact that the growth matters. Um, I I'm grateful that they they take a bigger view of this than just scores because, yes, these scores. When our principals talk about this, the the, it's really easy to use MCAS scores as a surrogate for socio economic status. For the level of education of what's going on in the home. But but I would dare say as a practitioner in this state for for the last two decades. Um, the the MCAS has shown light into into corners and into spaces that desperately, desperately needed like shown in for the good of all kids. Uh, and and for the good of equity with a capital E. So, uh, I am not joining the chorus of people who suggest that we um, that we get rid of them. Uh, I I think with this, I will stop sharing my screen and ask if Christina, with your permission, if Nolan could uh, could jump in to talk about Lanesboro Elementary School. In particular. So Nolan, I th- I think all three of you should have the ability to to share your screens.
Oh, that is fantastic.
Yeah.
Hello again, everyone. Long time no see. Can everyone see? Screen thumbs up if you can see the screen. Excellent. Uh, so there is a lot of data around, um, that surrounds MCAS, little nooks and crannies everywhere. Um, so it's a ton to explore, but I think it is a great look into the education. That happens in the class every now throughout the year. It allows us to compare where we are at compared to every other school in the state at that time. So it's a nice little fixture that we get to look at. Uh, so I'm gonna start with a forty thousand foot view of the data, then dive into the highlights. Uh, what we're working on, where we're focusing in and the impact of COVID. So. First, I'm gonna just just display the percentages of where students are at. Um, so this is the math scores from grades three, four, five and six. And it is the percent of each. The percent of students in each grading category. So blue is exceeding expectations, greens meeting expectations. Um, orangish, yellow is partially meeting and red's not meeting. Uh, when I start looking at this and I start my overview, I'm looking to see how little red we have. We want as many students in that partially meeting. And um, meeting exceeding expectations as possible and are. The push when we meet in our data meetings and we do things like that is how can we move our students to the left? How do we go from not meeting to partially, partially to. Meeting and then meeting to exceeding. That's our big view, our big goal every single year. So let's leave this up for ten more seconds. And then we'll talk about ELA.
Nolan.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I don't, I don't know where in our conversation this comes in, but there are. Points of celebration here.
Oh, I have, I have highlights.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Forty thousand foot view then diving into the highlights.
Okay, all right.
Um, yeah, I'll I'll do my best to give it. There's a lot of highlights at a school like Lanesboro and probably all schools in the district, a lot of highlights everywhere. Um, so I'm gonna give as many highlights as I can after the science. So this is just the forty thousand foot view.
You you know that we're really bad about celebrating, Julia. You 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 get that from the inside out.
Well, well, I know you're really focused on how to grow and improve, and I think you do have to stop and celebrate. That's all I just wanna. I know you're also good at celebrating, but I really wanna make sure we celebrate.
So, continue to look at ELA. I'll get a a hint on my first celebration. If you look at grade six, the school scores. Were absolutely fantastic. And not, you know, the teacher that taught ELA last year was his first time teaching ELA in his years of teaching. He's always been a math teacher with a brand new curriculum, so. Real real big highlight there. So this is our science scores. For those unfamiliar with the MCAS uh, science exam. It's a cumulative assessment for grades three, four and five taken at the end of, at near the end of fifth grade. Uh, so we were kind of expecting to take a hit here because science is a curriculum that's hands on with partners and materials and sharing and labs. And those labs is hands on learning experiences were hard to do with the safety criteria implemented and being remote for a little bit. But I have a strong faith in our science teachers or all of our teachers that this will recuperate quickly. Once now that we're back in the classroom, sharing materials, doing fun experiments and learning. You know, the science curriculum, the best way to, and that's with our hands on it. So. The highlights. Um, the big one is grade six. Uh, and I think it's important to highlight grade six because they, as a class in grade three, took the entire MCAS, right? They were there. For the ELA in the math section of the MCAS, and now they're back. Uh, so we had a ton of students exceeding, tons of student meeting, very few students partially meeting, and only one student didn't meet. In the not meeting category. And then, so as Jake talked about, the student growth potential. We had eighty one percent in math and seventy eight percent average in ELA. So those are huge jumps compared to their peers. And, you know, other schools. Other notable highlights that I didn't get to talk about before is, um, again, I always talk about. Not being red and moving to the left. All the grades, uh, grade three, all students were partially meeting or better in ELA. And grade five, ELA, all students were partially meeting or better in ELA. So those are students. Red levels that did not have. Any students not meeting in that subject. So subgroups, um. As we scroll through the subgroups, I think it's important to recognize that there are few students in each subgroup. So this is actually all of the students that are identified. In grades three, four, five and six, um, because we have to do it this way at Lanesboro. Because we have less than ten at in each grade level at points and that. Desi does not release that data or does not, the data is not as reliable. I've talked about how we address that later on. Um. So what we're looking here is is to have these blue ovals to have about the same number. In those blue ovals, and again, we wanna move everything to the left. So for example, if you look at the subgroup ELA, students with disability. Um, we have twelve, twelve percent or twenty six students with disability were not meeting. Um, and we have, I can tell you what we're doing to correct that in a little bit. So these are things that stuck out to me and our teams as we looked at this ELA subgroup data. And so these are things that we are addressing this school year. This is math again. If you look, you know, at students with disabilities, we have nineteen percent. Not meeting and zero percent exceeding expectations. And that kind of, that really is where I'm driving is we have students. That have disabilities that can be exceeding expectations and they're just not quite there yet. So the way we're, some of the changes we made this year are. Hopefully correcting that action. Science. Um, one thing I found interesting in the science subgroups is the male and female categories. I'm sure you've all heard. Stats about male and female in science. We had zero males not meeting and s- at six percent meeting. We had twenty one percent females not many expectations and sixteen percent. Females exceeding expectations. I found that interesting, how it's just so divided at that in those groups. So I gave you kind of, I don't say the bad news, but the letting you know where we're focusing in. And this is what we're doing, where we're focusing in. Um, so what I did to understand our curriculum better is I took an item analysis. And I looked at all things where we were not, where we did not have seventy five percent or higher correctness. I took the standards of those questions. And I categorized them to see which of those standards were frequent. Um, so having three or more. Questions in that standard that we did not have seventy five percent correct or um, more. So for ELA. Uh, analyzing the structure of text, including how specific sentences, paragraphs. And the larger portions of text relate to each other and the whole. And the second standard, it's as a assess. How point of view, purpose, shapes content style of text. So. I don't know if you are familiar with wit and wisdom. Or any of that curriculum. That that brand new curriculum is drilling this home. Um, especially in grades four, five and six, they're connecting text, they're looking at text right now. They're reading a book in grade six as a collection of short, I would say, poems almost, um. With math. The bigs, big ones were measurement and data, numbers and operation in base ten. And number operations fractions. And that is setting us back to the the uh, everyday math curriculum that we are currently using. There's a spiraling curriculum to see if there's a way we can make it ro- more robust. Around. Those topics to make sure the students are getting what they need. So. Here's some things that we're doing to correct those blue ovals that you saw before. Uh, this year, October seventh and on November eighth, just this Tuesday, we had professional development about UDL on UDL. Uh, just taking our tier one instructions, our RA top notch, and taking it to the next level to make sure that it's. Meeting the needs of every student in the classroom. Schedule changes. Uh, so the way we developed our special education schedule this year is we focused in on students. Who had the likely, the likeness in their specialized education need. We grouped those students together instead of doing it just by grade six, there's there's students who need ELA special education. Uh, so we made our groups smaller. And in the special classroom and really allowed to focus in on specialized instruction in those times. And then the class list change, um, for a long time at Lanesboro, students with IEPs were grouped into one classroom. Of, you know, three or four students, one where we've, we've been able to split that group to have heterogeneous grouping in our, in our schools. In our classes, and that's allowed, allows uh, a goal to allow student success. And then the other thing we're implementing is data meetings, and this is how we're really narrowing in on those. Blue ovals because those percentages are like. Twelve percent of sixteen kids, it's you can really narrow it down on those students. So by looking at student work. As we go through every day, I mean, so every day to me, we're looking at a pile. Of student work on a standard and see who's mid, um, missing it and who's not missing it. That allows us to adjust, circle back and correct our teaching as we move forward. And I know the question that you all have in mind, the COVID impact, um. So based on our numbers, we're not seeing, you know, massive learning loss like we expected. And, you know, learning loss might not be the right term. We can, um, if we never, we can't lose something you've never had. So we're calling it potholes that we need to reteach. Um. And I think the most noticeable impact that COVID has had. On our students at Lanesboro is social development. Uh, the greatest, you know, uh, the youngest population has had disrupted or no school. Uh, teachers have spent, you know, at the beginning of the year at least. A lot of time on appropriate classroom behavior and school routines. And then for the upper grades, it's more of remembering how to interact with students and navigating disagreements. We currently have a, and to fix this and work on this and to move in the right direction with this, we have a social worker that pushes into each classroom thirty minutes a week. To work on social skills with all the students. And then the so- the school adjustment counselor and the schools, school psychologist. Do small group counseling and lunch groups. And we have implemented zones of regulation with our classrooms to allow students to understand their emotions and help self regularly. Now, I have talked for a long time, and before I throw these slides away, is anything? Now, I have talked for a long time, and before I throw these slides away, is there anything specific that the school committee wants to look at before I close the shirt screen? Jose.
Thanks Nolan. Um, I just have some questions about the bar charts that you shared with us. And, uh, I just want to commend you and, and all of your staff for the incredible work that you do. For our kids and for our community.
Is there a specific subject area you wanna see?
Oh, no, it, not necessarily. I think it kind of pops up, but in, in everyone, it's the breakdown of school district versus state. And there are some discrepancies, or I should say differences between. Lansbury Elementary numbers and numbers for the districts. And when I'm, you know, what I want. Just to make sure I understand about how the data are being presented, the. There are only two elementary schools. You know, that are reflected in those district numbers. So the Lansbury Elementary data. Are embedded in those district averages, is that correct?
Yes.
Right. And so that's, I think was the, maybe the, some of the concern that I have is that the. If, if that's the case, then are we better off? And maybe we want to avoid this, and maybe that's why the data are presented the way they are. Um, you know, we're, we're really trying to get a sense of how Lansbury Elementary and Williamstown Elementary Schools are performing. Or at least how students reporting on, on the MCAS relative, relative to each other. Are, would you say, given the data that you have at your disposal, that there are significant differences in the MCAS performances between the two elementary schools?
So, I, I tend not to look at Williamstown scores. Um, and that's not just like, I'm, I'm super competitive and that's part, like, part of it. I don't wanna, you know. Say anything mean to Cindy or have Cindy say anything mean to me. But that's not gonna allow us to grow by comparing ourselves to Williamstown. I think we get more bang for our buck to look at our own students to see where they're at and then doing that item analysis to see. What, where, where our gaps are, where are potholes that need to be filled up?
Okay. Then, then maybe, I mean, one question would be is whether we show the district data at all then, because that's what they sort of lead you to immediately doing is to try to get a sense of. And how the two schools are, are performing alongside each other. But, but I wonder if we're missing an opportunity. You know, for, you know, as we are trying to, um. You know, equally and equitably and fairly serve all of our students regardless of, of which school they happen to be learning in, and to prepare them. Equally for, for the middle school and high school. I guess the, the concern would be for me is, is whether, um. Are we missing opportunities to either learn from best practices between both schools? Or are there challenges in either school, um, that these kind of data will help us pick up on that might then allow us to better. You know, uh, meet those challenges, so to say. Is that, that's what I'm wondering, you know?
I'm gonna jump in here if I may, and, and, and it's interesting thinking about. My, my Pittsfield experience with eight elementary schools and the, and the. The efforts that we went to, to avoid, um, comparisons between the schools and, you know, to. The, wi- with an exception, and the exception would be, and, and the same would go for here with two elementary schools. I, I think that. S- you know, somebody like Joel, somebody like me. We, we look at comparison. For the purpose of is the district curriculum that we're implementing. Or the district professional development that we're in, that we're implementing. Whether it's attached to that specific curriculum or something else. Is it? It, is it effective? Or are we seeing growth where we should be seeing growth in, in, in both schools? Um. My observation of, of our two schools is that they are, you know, it's, it's sort of like. Having more than one child in your family. Both amazing and wonderful, and you step back and you're like, wow. I, I love this child. I love this place. But also recognizing that they're very different in certain ways. And, um, and, and I think I know that Nolan and Cindy definitely work together to look at. And if, and when they look at each other's data, it's around, wow, what are you doing with this? What are you doing with this item? Or what are you doing with this strand of, uh. Of state objectives because you really seem to be across the board nailing it. Um, so, so, yeah, I, I, I'm not quite sure the value for, for public consumption of, of. The, the district comparisons. This is how the state. Like, the, these slides that Nolan is showing are directly from the state's website, so it is how, it is how they kind of look at us. Or it's part of the information that they provide us. But, but I think we tend to look at it in terms of, of how do we. How, how do we build on the strengths of two very different but very special places? So it's an interesting question, and I, and, and it's actually helpful that we had the opportunity to talk about.
Yeah, yeah, thank you Jake. And maybe what I'll do is just make, to, to, to rephrase. What I think I'm hearing from both you and Nolan, you know, it's, it's that we, you'd both would rather us. How, how should I put this? I've already lost my, my, uh, my momentum here. Um. We should be worried less about differences in MCAS performance between the two elementary schools. And more focused on, uh, as we, as we heard in the earlier part of this presentation, you know, the new MCAS data on, um. I can't remember the phrasing, potential for growth or progress towards growth, you know, opportunities, or, or, or seeing how, how the, the schools are. Supporting our students through the multiple grade levels within, within, uh, within this individual schools. I'm rambling, but is that, does that, is that what you're telling us?
I, I, I think, I think that's a good piece of it. Yes, yes. And I, and I understand, we're, we're all on like hour, uh, thirteen or fourteen of the day, so you're, you're doing fine.
You're, you're very kind, thank you.
Julia.
Yeah, I, um, I'm gonna lower my hand. Um, I just wanted to express my gratitude Nolan for laying out all of this data, um, and for looking at. Um, and, and the, the description you gave of how you. Um, how you use the data at a school level. Um, and I, and I think what I get to take away as a school committee member, without getting into all the details, what I'm taking away as a school committee member. Is that you have good structures in place to look deeply at this data. Um, to look at it, I love to see that you look at it by subgroup. Um, and that you're then targeting your work effectively. And I think that that, um, as a school committee member is, is really helpful to hear as we think about budgets. Um, and when you come before us and say, we need another special ed teacher, or we need another, um, you know, a new curriculum or whatever it is. Um, having the, the foundation of understanding of where your request comes from is really helpful. And in this case in particular, um. I just wanna say how striking it was that the very changes you were asking for in the budget last year. Um, are bearing out in the data here that they were needed. Um, and I, and, and it is a little tricky, the timing on all of this, but I think it just speaks to the, um, the quality of you, you and your team. For also just knowing what's needed, uh, regardless of the MCAS. So that's, that's all.
Thank you. Any other questions? Alright, well, thank you for your time. Are we ready?
Cindy, you should be all set to share.
Hi, everybody. Um, so lucky me, as always, I always get to go second, and you have heard many pieces of what I am about to say. Um, I do wanna say, um, you are about to see similar graphs from what Nolan shared. Um, it's, you know, I don't wanna spend a lot of time on the graphs. I wanna share them with you so that you can see them, refer back to them. Um, but to Jose's point, I think it's really important to note, um. Nolan and I definitely are not looking at each other's data because I know I can sit here on this screen and say to you, one of the most important things to he and I is that. We are continuing to get all of our kids to have similar experiences within the district, and that's something. That we're doing through curriculum, through programming, through presentations, through assemblies, through going up to the high school. With the goal in mind that we are going to be able to unequivocally send groups of children up to Jake when they get to middle and high school saying. That we have foundationally provided them with the same types of things, and we're proud of that. Um, Nolan and I have had the ability to teach in the district, you know, that we are now principals of the elementary schools, and we can both speak to the fact that. It was not always that way, and that different schools were doing different things, and kids would wait until seventh grade to be able to lay eyes on somebody from another district, and. You know, we're proud of the fact that we are trying to make our best effort to not have that be the case. And to make our kids be able to have this, you know, shared things, and for our staffs too. This is the first time I can remember in years where our staffs are coming together in professional development. They're having meaningful discussions around curriculum. They're having the opportunity to talk about what works and what doesn't work. And that's something that's really powerful in any district. So, um, I definitely think it's worth noting. Um, slides for me, again, I, I want you just to take a glance at them. I mean, it's public information. Um, you're going to notice that the data for Williamstown Elementary School, um. In every single grade level, one of the highlights is, is that, you know, this school is performing better than the state averages across grades three through six. Um, you know, I'm looking at this collectively, both in English Language Arts. Um, also in math, we're performing better than the state. Um, you'll notice too much like Nolan said, you're always looking to see, you know. Which areas are we not meeting expectations, and we're always looking to see. How are we going to make sure that, you know, we're moving up in different levels so that we have less kids in that not meeting expectations? Um, but collectively speaking, um, science, math, and English Language Arts were performing better than what, you know. The state is as far as, you know, meeting the expectations, which we're pretty proud of. And similarly, this is, you can kind of take a look, these are, you know, pieces of data that Travis and I were able to pull. So you can get, you know, generally speaking, across grades three through six. The percentage of kids who are meeting or exceeding expectations having taken the MCAS this last year. Um, pretty remarkable and something that we're pretty proud of. And also similarly with math, you know, across all grade levels. The number and percentages of students who are meeting or exceeding expectations has been, you know, was something notable to mention as a highlight. And as I prepared for this presentation and definitely agonized about this presentation. Many of my colleagues on this screen have been on the end of my agonizing over the last bunch of days about it. Um, I look at this data and I can say we're performing better than the state and that's great. Um, but this data is pretty consistent, right, from last year, the year before, the year before, the year before. Um, when I look at subgroups, my, you know, I don't have glaring trends from different subgroups. Collectively speaking, you know, what do I wanna see for the school? And for me, in doing this entire presentation, this next slide is something that is where. I wanna be focusing efforts in taking the MCAS data and being able to use what it shows me. To be able to make changes within the school, but also to be able to look and see. The, all of those things that we talked about last year and wanting to go forward this year, what could we do to be able to meet the needs of our students? And, as I said, highlights, you know, we're meeting or exceeding expectations across the, the state, which is great, but as. Everywhere, there's room for improvement in all grade levels and all subject areas. Um, I want our kids to be doing the best that they can possibly be doing. Um, there's always room for improvement, and I think it kind of goes backwards to. We've looked at professional development, and one of the things, you know, is that universal design for learning to enhance tier one instruction. But to that end, um, the one takeaway for me in this entire presentation is I don't want us to be focused on. You know, a subgroup. I don't want us to be focused on who's meeting, who's exceeding. What I want us to be focused on at the end of the day. Is every student, every day. Every kid, every day deserves a right to come to school and get it. Be taught in a way that works for them, that really helps them to. Get what they need, whether you are a student who's, uh, has special needs, whether you're a student who's a multilingual learner. Whether you're a student who requires enrichment. If you're a student who requires remediation, we need to be continually focused on. Every student getting what they need on a daily basis. And that speaks to us putting in wit and wisdom so that our kids are getting that ELA curriculum. Um, the zones of regulation, what, that Nolan spoke about. Um, we have seen social emotional learning as, you know, a big concern for students. Yes, it's definitely so coming out of COVID, but, you know, five or six, ten, fifteen years ago, our, our kids still needed. Social emotional learning. One of the things that we were able to do was we have a specialist now who's a social emotional learning specialist. Our kids in pre-K through six, go to a specialist for forty minutes a week. And work on things like social, you know, self-awareness, self-management, social skills, relationship building skills. Decision-making skills so that they're focusing and we're hoping to build their social emotional competence. Um, and it's something that, you know, just in the couple of short months that we've had it at school, has, you know, we've seen really big gains from, which is, we're proud of. And other big things as far as how we're addressing the gaps. Uh, we have a, developed a school data team, which has been, um, something that's really been. Uh, great to be a part of, to have different perspectives and be able to look at the data and have different. People coming together to not only go through our typical benchmark assessments of FastBridge and Dibbles. But to be able to talk about what's working, what's not working, but also how do we help our teachers? Read the data. How do we help our teachers use the data in a way that's meaningful for instruction? And similarly, we added a reading specialist this year based on what we were seeing with reading scores. Um, allows us to see more children, provide more interventions. Um, and we'll take a look at the data throughout the school year using both Dibbles and FastBridge. Um, to see what kind of an impact that has on us as a school. And then lastly, um, again, that notion of FastBridge and Dibbles. We are definitely, FastBridge was something we really struggled with last year as far as to really implement fully and feel like we were confident. And not only using it as an assessment tool, but also in being able to read and understand the data, and we've been fortunate this year. To participate in a lot of training and professional development so that. We have a better understanding, we're able to communicate to our teachers better, we're able to disseminate information with our families. About what that data looks like. Um, and it's something now. Both our reading specialists and our math interventionists are using FastBridge data to really look at student growth. And, and for me, then the MCAS is one measure, it's one moment in time. Um, we're seeing growth every time we look at our progress monitoring data. We're seeing growth when we're looking at FastBridge and Dibbles, and it's something that we're hoping, you know, to continue to hit that notion that we want. All of our students to get what they need every single day. Um, we often talk about, you know, tier two and tier three instruction. Um, all which are super important, but the other thing we wanna also be talking about is what are we also doing for enrichment? What are we doing to make sure that we are differentiating to all? Because differentiating, differentiating to all does truly mean to all. Are we making sure that we are making rigorous, you know? Are we making rigor, the instruction rigorous? Are we making sure that we are engaging our students no matter where they are, and that we're meeting them where they're at? And hopefully providing them with an experience to reach their maximum potential throughout elementary school. Other questions? Wow, no questions. Feel like I should run. Alright, thank you, everybody.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Schutz, I think you're, you have the ability to, to screen share now too.
Alright, thank you. Good evening, folks. Let me, where's the? From beginning. How was that look? I get an up-down, okay, got an up-down. Alright, thank you. Um, good evening. It's good to see you. Um, I'm happy overall with our students' performance. I'm happy with our faculty and staff's dedication, commitment. to our students and to their education. Tonight, my goal is to show you the wave tops. Just hit those crests of the 2022 MCAS scores for math, English, science and STE. Math or STE is science for grades seven and 10. So here we have our math. This is a breakdown of their scores. You see the grade seven on the top left, grade eight on the top right, and grade 10 on the bottom left. And note, Jose already did, but just note that our school and district numbers are the same because we are the only middle high school in the district. Also, in the 10th grade specifically, we've had, we had our 98% participation rate. And that was 96 students. And I just sort of jotted down what Nolan and Cindy sort of called out and what you see in the charts as far as the the levels of exceeding meeting expectations or partially in that meeting. So there's the math. Overall, you can see we do fairly well. Consistent, if not a little better than the state averages. For ELA 10th grade, again, good percentage rate for the 10th grade, 98 percentage participation over 96 students. Outperforming the state in the seventh grade and both exceeding and meeting. The seventh, eighth and 10th grade ELA standards or levels. And lower both in the partially meeting and that meeting. That all good news.
Hey, can I just ask a question here? It's Carrie.
Hey.
Hey, so the ELA in eighth grade, it looks like you have a much higher not meeting in that particular on that particular test. Do you have any thoughts about that?
Eighth grade not meeting.
Right? I'm looking at the slide in the upper right.
Yep. Compared to, you just mean compared to the seventh?
Yeah, compared to seventh and tenth. Yep. Tenth, you have no one not meeting, it looks like, and very few in seventh.
So what we did, I'll get to this a little bit later. So what we have just begun is to do that deep dive. And so what we do next is we, these results go to our departments. We take them in our, in the SST and in cabinet. And we do the deep dive into the item analysis. And we check question by question to see if there are themes that were, happened to not be covered. So like, for example, this is ELA, but for some reason I'm thinking like slopes. Like if we, if all the questions that were, happened to be not meeting were in slopes. Is that something that we missed last year? So I'm also trying to think of what was going on last year with staffing. So like all, there's a host of things that go into the analysis, into the deep dive that we, that I'm not hitting right now. That we're still sort of in the mid stuff. Carrie, I can't see you, but that.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I'm nodding my head.
Okay.
Great. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. And for, for science and similar science, seventh grade does not have a science exam. And then the eighth grade, we had the partially meeting was similar to the state, not, not lower or higher. They did grade the 10th grade, it was, we only had 92 students participate and it was a 97 percentage, 97% participation. That's the average participation. We typically have pretty good participation in our 10th grade MCAS. However, actually, I won't, I won't bring it up here. Well, since I, they did have, they did have a, we moved from the legacy testing to the next gen testing on science recently. So they did include those. So if you do look, if you do your own research and look online, they did include this test and they graded it on both scales. I've only included the next gen testing, which is consistent how we test everything else. So science was like the last test to switch over to the next gen. So it's just kind of like FYI, if you do your own research and look at it, you might see sort of two two grades for 10th grade science tests. So for the, for the COVID impact, overall, I'm not really sure. I can say our students are still recovering. I know we're still recovering. That goes for academically, socially, emotionally. From a a broad view, I can say that the impact was across the board, was mixed between all subjects and students. Our, our next step is to keep doing what we've been doing is to address issues as they come up. And that's sort of what our teachers do day in and, and day out. That's sort of step one. Our next step is to complete our deep dive into the results, into the items, into the subgroups, the categories, to do that thorough analysis that we do every year. And that is the analysis that we did last year that led us down the road to our math interventionists to do some rescheduling in our English department to rethink how we assign our support staff. So luckily, we have many of those practices already in place. Luckily, we have many resources already in place. This year, the Williams Center at Mount Graylock has probably had his busiest year so far. We have a waiting list for tutors in our tutoring sessions. So that's, that's great. That means our students are accessing those, those resources that are available. So once we, and however, once we finish that analysis, that's when we'll reallocate or realign those, those resources and those supports. But to finish off with some, some good news, I always like hunting the good stuff. I'm an optimist. So just in a quick comparison, and again, this is wave tops of the 10th grade, English and math, 19 to 22. Here's three highlights. We had similar percentages of students ranked in both the exceeding and meeting expectation levels in both 2019 and 22. That's in the math and in the English. We had fewer students in 22 ranked in the not meeting level. And we had a higher rate or higher percentage of students that passed the MCAS in 2022 than in 2019. So there's light at the end of the tunnel. We're doing good work. Our students are resilient and are plugging away. And our staff is doing an excellent job at it. So I thank you for your support and welcome any questions. And Jake or whoever's watching, I can't see anybody.
Do you want to stop screen sharing?
Oh, there we are. Yep. Yes. Okay. Any questions? Carrie?
Thanks, Jake. My question is about preparing kids to go to college if they so choose. I'm hearing from a lot of faculty, not just Williams faculty, but faculty at the college level who are finding that a lot of kids are just coming into college and community college, not knowing how to do school. And if that may just be a generational thing that they're, they're working with a generation that was so heavily impacted by COVID during high school. But I'm wondering if there are steps that we're taking as a middle high school. This would be true, of course, also as elementary school. You know, if, or if we're finding that that is something that we are still dealing with, that kids don't, students are not understanding that they actually need to turn in work when it's due. That they need to read the syllabus and prepare for classes, that they can't just like not show up to class, you know, those kinds of things. I mean, is this something that you're seeing?
It's, it is a struggle and it's, it's real. It's something, it's those executive functioning skills that we sort of paused for a year and a half, two years. And it's something that was wrote, you know, that was just, you know, built in, that was scheduled in, drilled in to the routine and we're relearning it. And we're relearning it with our students sometimes, like for example, how to use the auditorium for our middle schoolers. We had to practice, our seventh and eighth grade had to practice how to appropriate. So we rehearsed how to be an audience, appropriate audience members before the, we went to the, and watched the play today. So we did that as, as teams. But, and it's a lot of conversation, it's also a lot of individual conversations. You know, why, why am I, you know, why, and there's natural consequences for certain things. Why am I getting 10 points off on my paper? Because I did turn it in, but I turned it in two days late and it's, it's conversations with parents who might not understand. And with, with teachers and parents and students. And so it's, it's sort of all the above. We do have directed studies that, and at various grades focus more intently on those, on those skills. Middle school, much more, seventh grade, the seventh grade team is very focused on, on tasks like those. But but yes, it is a struggle. We do have students, however, that are, are college students that have taken a senior waiver and are currently doing well in, in our Mount Graylock students, but taking classes, you know, fully at BCC. So we, we do have those students who are, are still doing very well and have those skills. But it is, it is noticeable and it's, we're sort of tackling it on a couple of fronts.
Anecdotally, I had gone to the open house at, up at the middle high school and listened to an English teacher describe how they have to retrain students to read a book because it is so hard for them. Because they were gathering all their information from electronic devices and it's so immediate and so quick. And to have to sit down and consume a book physically was just like learning how to run a marathon, just a really fascinating perspective that, that I hadn't thought about.
Right. Or teachers just taking their classes to the library, just, you know, students of, you know, all grades, just taking them to the library to, to check out a book, to peruse the shelves. Like that hasn't happened in, in quite some time. Jose.
Thank you, Jake. And this, this could go to either, either Jake. And I've been looking at graphs all day. So apologies that I focused on these graphs, these, these bar charts. The, is it correct that the distribution of the, of the data, do they experience a shift from the elementary schools to the middle school, high school? Because it certainly looks like from seventh through 12, that the shape of the distributions is pretty robust, or at least it repeats itself. You know, in terms of our relative, our performance relative to, to the state averages. And the other thing that I, I think I noticed was that the, it seemed our, there is a, we, the, the, the number of students who are exceeding expectations, for instance, drops considerably from, from fourth, fifth and sixth to seventh, eighth and ninth and beyond. Is that correct? And if it is correct, what might that, yeah, but how, how should we be interpreting those data?
I just, I can, well, I'm not sure if I understand your, the first part of your question. So I'm gonna let Jake answer that. But I just happen to have my math graph, math graph up here. And you know, it looks like at least double the amount of our students in 10th grade were, we, we had double the amount of exceeding the expectations compared to the state standards. So I would say no to that last part, at least for the math thing that I'm looking at right now. But Jake, you can tackle the first part.
Yeah, I, I thank you because that's the part I felt like I, I could maybe, I can at least walk up to it. I don't know if I can tackle it. So my experience, and I, and I think Curtis may have some insight into this, and I don't want to put anybody on the spot, but Julia may as well. My experience of watching MCAS scores over the past 20 years would be, and I don't want to fuel any conspiracy theories in any way, but that the 10th grade test particularly may be designed to have more students rather than fewer students pass. Because that is, that is the gateway test for graduating from public high schools in the Commonwealth. I, so, so, so there is, and, and, and again, my, my colleagues who are, who are involved in public education could weigh in. Lots of talk almost annually about, while the 10th grade test once again was easier than all the other tests, but man, that third grade test, they were really trying to set us up to have great growth scores the following year because the third grade reading test was impossible. So who, who knows, you know, it's, it's, you, you would look at it, you would look at a test like the 10th grade ELA test. And reading, writing, interpreting literature, language, that, that scaffolds very neatly on itself as you go through grade levels. So, so you might expect that 10th grade ELA is, is not vastly different than third grade or fifth grade or eighth grade ELA. Because the core principles are the same thing as kids start working on in ELA and pre K and K. Mathematics is a little bit more of a tapestry that's woven out of several different branches of mathematics. And Curtis could speak to this with infinitely more power and authority than I could. But, but I, I don't think it's by accident that you see. I would, I would struggle to explain a little bit more your second question, but I think your first question is that by the nature of the testing program, by the nature of middle and high school teachers, perhaps putting more time and energy into how to take the test. As well as the subject area that comprises the, the subject of the test would, would explain why there's maybe tighter groupings in the more positive reporting categories than at the reporting categories than at the elementary school.
So just just to make sure I understood that, Jake, the it's it's I think the big the concern was that, you know, our students entering the middle school, high school are encountering some learning challenges that might make their performance in the MCAS, you know, be affected. What you're saying instead is that what's quite likely for could be a number of reasons, overall state performance on the MCAS is is greater than perhaps they 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 the scores will suggest during those elementary school years. And that's why you see the sort of more similar looking distributions for our district and then for the state.
Yeah, I I think that's so, although, and I don't want to prolong this. But but I but I would also take the opportunity to to, you know, your observation about the transition from the elementary grades to the middle grades. Carrie's point from, you know, maybe seven or eight minutes ago about a certain aspect of the data, the conversation that we had earlier tonight around student travel, the very robust conversation we had around the the deep, deep, deep equity issues involved with that realm of what we do. And I was sitting there thinking during that conversation, boy, if that's that's one root of a big equity tree we're talking about. I I was thinking of 10 or 20 other routes that that we probably need to address if we're really going to address it. To me, you take all of that together and and you I can start to see some some really broad notions that there are various levels of support that we could be, should be providing our students from the early grades till the day they graduate, if not a little beyond around, you know, or just around being being healthier, being happier, being more joyful and and measuring that as a piece of what overall school success is to. Because I I think those kind of successes would ultimately feed into some of the academic successes. And I think a good comprehensive look at what layers of support do we have for emotional wellness, mental wellness and academic wellness, K through 12? How do we better equip teachers to provide those supports in their classrooms on the fly on a daily basis? And how do we, which would ultimately address that? I it wouldn't address, but it would go a little ways toward toward Carrie's point of there's just some things that are being lost between that senior year and that freshman year for students that that continue on into higher education. I I think you can maybe expect to see some of this in in the updated version of the district improvement plan as we look at how do how do we better support students across the whole continuum to be more successful with a capital S in 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 really everything they're endeavoring to do as a young human being. So thanks, thanks for the opportunity for me to give that monologue this late in the meeting. But I but I think it's an important pulling together of some threads that we're all probably thinking about.
And thank you, Jake. I that really hits home. I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jake. Okay, now moving on to our regularly scheduled programming. I believe we have next up the finance subcommittee report. So I will turn that over to Carrie. Nope, you're muted, Carrie.
So we're at number 11 on the agenda?
Yes, and because we have taken up so much time, you only have one minute to speak. I'm just kidding.
Yeah, no, actually, that's fine. We will bring, I believe, at the next meeting, is that right, Jake? We'll bring some and it will bring the end of year report to you at the next meeting. I think that's the plan. But I can say that administration, our finance team has been working with the auditors, which is, I think, new this year, and I highly support it. So rather than turning in our end of year report and then working with the auditors to like correct a bunch of different things, they're actually working together before turning in the report. And the auditors have been super helpful and it's helping us to kind of straighten out how we do our accounting. So it's it's addressing a couple of things at once. So I think it's going to work out really well for us. We're in we're in good shape.
Great.
Yeah.
I think we had the copier business lease on here.
So that that is an annual, I actually not prepared to speak to that except the fact that it's an annual, I know that it's an annual thing and the school committee just has to approve it. Is there a copy of the lease in the packet?
There is.
There is, okay.
And I'm happy to speak to that, Carrie.
Okay.
Joe and I discussed that, so so somebody would would be ready.
Okay.
It, you know, our our current cost per month for the machines that are listed in the packet, it's the Mount Graylock main office, the West main office, the West second floor copier, the Lanesboro Elementary workroom, the West mailroom. Why take that back? The Mount Graylock main office we own. So we are looking to replace that one. The the bottom line is that our our current monthly cost for the leasing of of our copiers is $1,587. The proposed new cost moving forward to to add another year to the lease is $1,562 a month. So it's actually less money, just fractionally per month. But we are adding an additional copier to replace that one that we own that is going on a dozen years old. So this is sort of a pro forma annual thing that we do. But I did want to point out a couple of nuances, you know, A, that the the cost is going down, B, that we are getting an additional copier within that cost structure, and C, that we do, we do shop this out annually to make sure that we're we're getting the machines we want at price that we want with the with the level of care that we want for when these machines are not working, which some of you know is can be a constant battle. Ursula, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I did. So you just mentioned 1,000, whatever it was. The attachment in the packet talks to 735 per month, or it looks like per month. So I was just curious.
Yeah, I don't.
In the paper or the?
I I don't think that attachment has all of the copiers listed. I think this was that was broken out differently, and I'm not sure we have. I'm not sure we have that clean version of of the second piece. But but the total cost is the is the and I don't know if you have in your packet the cover sheet for Rob Lanoc that does this assessment for us every year, that 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 has the current cost and then the the new. So we're so we're asking for approval to move forward with this lease with with repeat business systems.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Julia moves. Ursula seconds. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor?
Oh, and I.
Conry, I.
Constantine, I.
Elfin, bye, I.
Green, I.
Hello, I.
Okay, thank you. That motion passes. Carrie, anything else on finance?
No, we can move forward.
Okay, I hope you can't hear. I think a series of college students is descending upon my house right now. And I apologize if that's what you're hearing in the background. Okay, so next up on the agenda is the Policy and Governance Subcommittee Report. So we'll turn it over to Jose.
Thank you, Christina. I think I've got about 45 minutes worth of material to cover.
Excellent. You can do that in one minute and you're good.
All right, we met as a Policy and Governance Subcommittee the on October 4th. We have an upcoming meeting, I think, scheduled for November 30. I think it's in our our meeting packet, in case I got that date wrong. At our last meeting, we discussed the superintendent evaluation process. And we are in the process of editing the existing policy, CBI document on evaluation of the superintendent to reflect what the school committee has voted on in terms of process. We will be discussing this and we have a vote scheduled, or we will have a vote scheduled at the upcoming Policy and Governance Subcommittee. And we'll hopefully have a first read ready for you at our next full committee meeting. And unless Julia or Carrie correct me, I think that's all I have to share. That's my 45 minutes and 1 minute and 30 seconds.
Can I just say, Curtis, you're gonna love the Policy Subcommittee. It is such a great committee and I'm sad to leave it. But I'm happy that you're joining.
History books will be written, Curtis. History books will be written about our our escapades.
I look forward to that very much.
Thank you, Jose. Okay, next up is Field and Track Project Committee.
May I now share my screen? So I won't do it yet, actually. So the the Track and Field Project Subcommittee has been meeting every week, as you know. And we're honing in on the schematic design, which we are going to bring to you on November 17. So we have one more meeting before that. And I have some documents that I'm gonna share with you. They're they're gonna look a little different, I think, on November 17. But this is what we looked at at our last meeting. So some of the numbers may change. You don't have to decide anything. You're welcome to ask some questions, but I would encourage you actually to hold any major questions for the 17th, only because we're doing a joint meeting with the Track and Field Subcommittee and our our, you know, CP, the the architect and the OPM, I think, will also be at that meeting. So you'll be able to ask more intelligent, or they'll be able to give more intelligent answers. Jake and I will do our best. But, okay, so I will now share my screen and we'll look at the budget numbers. These are gonna look very similar to what you've seen. And I'm actually gonna drop down to, I gotta move you guys out of my screen. There you go. This is, so this is the last page, which has the the totals, right? So right now, we're at a base bid of $3.3 million. And that's down from 3.4 or whatever it was originally. Some of these numbers, as I said, are gonna change. One of them will be some of the contingency, like design contingency, I believe, is gonna drop in cost, so that'll make a difference. We did some tweaks to the design, mostly Brian Gill, Coach Gill, suggested some tweaks to the design, which may bring some of the numbers down at the, you know, in the previous pages. The main topic of discussion has been VE, value engineering and bid alternates. So what should be the bid alternates? And what we've landed on as a subcommittee are the permanent bleachers, what are being called home elevated bleachers and the press box. And then one fence, which I believe can be put in later. Or maybe it's half of that. No, one fence that that can be put in later. So the main thing is the bleachers and the press box. I'm gonna move to the detailed or not detailed design, but the schematic. So these, I'm gonna kind of breeze through these. These are what we've been looking at. So here, you'll see the bleachers and press box. What we've decided to do, and this is something that the school committee is going to vote on, right? By decide, I mean, we've decided to recommend. What we've decided to recommend is that we pour the pad, the concrete pad, for a permanent bleacher, assuming that we are gonna be installing a permanent bleacher at some point. And then the bleacher itself with the press box would be a bit alternate. So if there, if the if the bids come in lower or if the cost actually is less than what the bid had been, you know, within a certain amount of time, we can possibly move the bleachers into the project. It's kind of like what we did with the parking lot is with the school building project, if anybody followed that that portion of that particular conversation. Sorry about that. So there have been other conversations about whether to include pole vaulting and exactly the angle of the the throwing pads. And I shared some feedback that some of the throwing, like the discus, we 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 don't have enough throwing pads in the plan for what we have now. And Coach Gill said, oh, yeah, yeah, I I know about that. And we're gonna potentially, you know, put down some other pads elsewhere so that we can use those as well. So again, he is amazing, Coach Gill. He he is really, really trying to get what he needs and not what he wants, right? So if he got everything he wanted, this project would be way more expensive. He is trying to be very conscientious of budget and yet make this the best it can be within the, you know, realm of of reality. So I think that's all. This is just, again, more detail, more detail. These are public documents. We've been talking about them in our meetings. I don't know how much you want to look at all of this stuff. Again, more detail, more detail, more detail. So I'm gonna stop sharing there. If you want me to go back to anything, I'm happy to do that. Jake, did I leave anything out that that we've been talking about?
No, I don't think so, Carrie. Thank you for that overview.
Okay, Jose?
Thanks, Carrie, and thank you for all of the incredible work you do. So this question is, and I apologize if it was answered at a previous meeting that I wasn't able to attend. But given, you know, the change in the value of the Williams College Endowment, I can think what I'm worried about is whether the the what the value of the gift is today. Do we have any sense of of how much?
Yeah, not yet, not yet. We know what it was at the close of fiscal 2022. We don't know what it is right now. We are planning to ask about that and also to ask about the solvency of the gift. We, our major spending will be in FY '24 realistically because of the gift. We, our major spending will be in FY twenty-four realistically, because that's when construction will be taking place. So, you know, in the summer of, or late summer. So again, that buys us a little more time for the markets to recover and to determine, you know, when which monies will become available, you know, to us. So one of the things that you may have heard, if you were able to listen to the meeting conversation from last month, is that we, as a committee, will need to decide, you know, if if there is enough money in the gift, but we would be using all of it, is that something the committee wants to do? If there is or isn't enough money in the gift and we need to use other resources, would we be willing to use E and D, which we could look into using? Would we be willing to look into using the other funds that we set aside, such as tuition and school choice? We can justify using those funds because, or we could talk about, I shouldn't say we could justify, we could talk about the rationale for using those funds, given that, you know, our choice and tuition students would have access, equal access to the track and field. John Benzinger, actually, he's our OPM and, or he's one of the two that we've been working with from Skanska. He brought up when the Little League field back in the day, it's called Little League, when the Little League bleachers were built, they got a community preservation grant. You know, based on community use of the property or and of the the grandstands. And we talked about, you know, community use of this facility, not the not so much the field, because that is gonna need to be protected. But the track will be definitely open to the community. It will be fenced for its protection against snowmobiles and such, but it will be open to the community. So we do need to, you know, look into those kinds of things, but the question is gonna come down to, you know, are we ready to do this? Are we, you know, and again, the next vote of this committee is not on money. It is on moving a schematic design, which I just kind of breezed through for you, into design development. And from design development, you create bid documents. And those then go out on the street and they follow a very highly regulated process. And then the bids come in. And those, you know, the the review of the bids happens and then a bid will be presented to you, or three bids will be presented to you. I don't quite remember. And then the committee will have its decision to make about spending money. Because once you approve a bid, you are committing to spending money on the project. So the hope is that we'll be in a, you know, in a good place, both in terms of the economy and, well, not by then, but moving in the right direction, in terms of the economy, but also ready to commit as a committee on a project that we've been working on for so many years now and that the community is expecting of us. I think the few, some of the feedback I've been getting from social media is, you know, I wish it were turf, but I'm really glad you're moving forward with this project, right? So I I think there is an expectation that we will carry on and figure out a way to pay for this. I have very mixed feelings about leaving out the bleachers or using it as a bid alternate, but I've been advised, we've been advised by our OPM and our architect that that's really the best way to go. If we're not able to include it in the project, then we have the option of buying some portable bleachers until we can figure out the funds, where those funds are gonna come from. So that's, that's the best I can give you right now. Christina?
My question is, what is the best way we can all prepare ourselves for the meeting on the seventeenth?
Yeah, so we're actually gonna talk about that on the fifteenth. So we have a meeting next Tuesday to figure out how to present to the committee and what exactly to present to the committee. So I would say by the morning of the sixteenth, if not before, the committee should have documents in the packet to help prepare for that. For that decision. And if they're later than that, I apologize, they would actually be coming from the architect and the OPM. So I'm not sure exactly what their timeframe is, but they know. I raised it in the last, the meeting last Tuesday, that they know that we need to give you the information that you need in order to make the best decision.
Great, thank you.
Anything else? Okay.
Great job. Okay, next up is the Superintendent Report.
We are gonna go through this really quickly, so please hold on to your hats. I know you all have heard me say that before, so I I can I can't see you the second, but I can see, imagine your eyes rolling. Just, just a quick word. We'll hit this more in December. Carrie and I did go to the annual Massachusetts Association of School Committees and Massachusetts Association of School Superintendent's Fall Conference. The title of the conference was Promoting Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion. I, it was an excellent conference. Carrie, you can certainly jump in. I chose to to put my conference highlight, which was getting to sit with Carrie and 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 some other folks from around the state and listen to Marta Garcia, who is the Commonwealth Teacher of the Year this year. She's a teacher of multilingual students from Witchcraft Heights Elementary School in Salem. Just a marvelous presentation, marvelous presentation, incredibly powerful. And and really, one of, one of many sessions that were just remarkable and beneficial and educational. And Carrie and I will talk more about that in December. Carrie, I don't know if you wanna add anything for right now?
Actually, the the two things that I would just say, and I agree that this was a, an amazing talk by this particular teacher, but Julia, I did bring up your concern in the division, sorry, getting them mixed up now. So the Delegate Assembly was the first thing that I went to, was actually on Wednesday instead of Friday or Saturday. And I did bring up your concern about the school the school committees gaining back authority from receivership, right? And so apparently, the issue that is being raised by the schools that have gone, by the committees that have gone into receivership, is that the state has no process for evaluating how the schools are doing or returning the schools to their committees. And they've just left it open. So what these districts want is to set up a process by which the state can assess how the schools are doing, but then also begin the process of returning them to the committee and setting standards for what that will look like and what the, what the expectations are of the committees.
Thank you, Carrie.
Yeah, yeah, no, it was, it was very informative. I raised a question about another issue, but I, or one of the other resolutions, but I don't quite remember what it was right now. And then I'll also say I attended the District Six meeting for the school committee members. And I was recently elected Chair of the District Six School Committees, so all of Berkshire County, which is a position I had filled for a year, a few years ago, but this is now a two-year position. And I walked into the room and immediately people were launched into a discussion about the Rural Schools Commission Report, which I don't know if everyone has had a chance to read it. It's the Commission on the Fiscal Health of Rural School Districts. But there's a lot in there about regional schools in rural districts, and there is a lot of support for pushing forward the recommendations of the rural, the school, the Rural Schools Commission, or the Commission on the Fiscal Health of Rural Schools, as it were to say. So and then we also talked about some other issues for the district, but suffice to say, I'll reach out to Liz LaFond, who is the Field Coordinator, as you know, for District Six. And if there is a district-wide meeting, I will let the district know, including yourselves. Right, that's it. More later.
Thanks, Carrie. I would like to thank Carrie for making me meet some new people and actually talk to people at the conference. Cause I'm more than happy to go sit in the back corner and just be by myself and my anxiousness around meeting new people. And Carrie was very helpful, so thank you. I'm gonna go through this. You've already seen a good amount of MCAS. I'm gonna move right to the, to the, the second heart of of this creature tonight, which is the, the enrollment update. And given the hour, I will try to get through this relatively quickly. You, you know, to make a, to make a longer story short, I I think our enrollment update for this year is really, really good news. The Berkshire County Public School Project from the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission had us slated for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, beating at around one thousand forty-eight students. We're over twelve hundred students, as we gather here tonight. That's, that's forty-nine students more who are attending our school district benefiting from being with, with our staff and with our students and with our families than we had last year. Lanesboro Elementary is, has an additional twenty-four students. Williamstown Elementary has an additional nine students. And Mount Greylock Regional School has an additional sixteen students. We, we now are at the point where we, we, you know, we can do a four-year look back. Next year, we'll be able to do a five-year look back. To me, this, this district has, the district and the schools that comprise the district have the potential to grow. There, there are limited vehicles for how a school and how a school district can grow. One is by families moving into the community. Two is through the Commonwealth School Choice Program. Three is, is by, in a situation like ours, where the Vermont border is, is closer to us than about ninety-five percent of the rest of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. We can, we can welcome students from Vermont into our school district as well because of Vermont's expansive view of, of, of tuition money following students rather than having set agreements. And so I am an advocate that there, with a strategy in mind and with good common sense in mind, and always with a respect for the people that actually pay our bills, the taxpayers here in Lanesboro and, and in Williamstown, and with great respect for our tuition partners in Hancock and New Ashford. I believe we have room to grow at all three of our schools that comprise the district, and this has some benefits, which I'll address at the end of this brief presentation. So to, to me, being over twelve hundred students as we enter into sort of more normal times, not post-COVID, but but coming to terms with COVID is a really positive thing and a good thing. Just looking through quickly, school by school, you can see how this breaks down across each of the individual grade levels. Lanesboro Elementary is up to two hundred thirty-one students. Two hundred and one of those students are from the town of Lanesboro. Adams, Cheshire, New Ashford, and the city of Pittsfield comprise the, the places where the rest of our students come come from. One of, one of our shared goals for the Lanesboro Elementary School is to get to a really predictable that there are going to be enough students to legitimately support two grade level sections in every single grade. That just makes for a more predictable world for the teachers that instruct there, makes for a more predictable world for families. While, as you can see, with two sections across the board in each grade, none of our grade levels are too big. A couple of them, you know, could probably use another student or two. That's, that's an area where moving forward, as we did this year, we can be very strategic and very thoughtful around the role of school choice. And I, I think this is a real benefit for everybody that goes to Lanesboro, and it's a benefit that will follow through up the Mount Greylock. You know, there is one grade level. You can see grade five, which is, which is a little smallish with two teachers. Pre-K is really one and a half teachers. Grade five is, is, I, I would make the case that when we, when we get out of looking at classes in two cohorts and get into looking at the individual students and the needs of the students that comprise those two cohorts, having two teachers for twenty-five students is a, is a great choice. I would say the same for grade four with twenty-four students. That twelve is a little small. Twelve and thirteen might be considered a little small, but it, but it certainly is in line with, with Lanesboro's sister brother school of Williamstown. And it best serves those individual students that comprise those, those class sections. Looking at Williamstown Elementary School, again, I, I think it behooves us to work to get toward a steady, predictable for teachers across every single one of the grade levels, with the exception of pre-K. We have four hundred and thirty-one students. Three hundred and ninety-five of those students are from Williamstown, Adams, Cheshire, Clarksburg, Lanesboro. This year, we don't have any students. I should have taken that off. I apologize. New Ashford, North Adams, and Windsor, Massachusetts comprise the, the remainder of the, of the communities from which students join us at Williamstown Elementary. And Mount Greylock Regional School, five hundred and twenty-eight students, just to put it out there, after watching Mount Greylock in action for a couple of years, after lots of conversation with lots of people over there, particularly teachers who have a vision for what that curriculum could be offering versus what it is offering and what it has offered in the recent past. I think aspiring toward a, a student population that is closer to five hundred eighty to six hundred students at Mount Greylock. An easy way to think of it is a hundred students across the board in each of its six grade levels. I, I think that would open up some avenues for, for new curricula at Mount Greylock that would be very exciting, very beneficial to students. Allow students and teachers both to pursue deeper dives into things that they are passionate about or think are important. Certainly, as we consider what we're doing with school choice at the elementary schools, we're doing that with a vision of when those elementary school students matriculate into Mount Greylock and, and considering the, the total of Lanesboro and Williamstown, trying to get to the point where we are approaching that one hundred, give or take, year after year, because we really think that's the best thing, not only for the students where they are, but for the students where they will be. Of the five hundred twenty-eight students that attend Mount Greylock Regional School, three hundred twenty-seven of them are from Williamstown. One hundred forty-three of them are from Lanesboro, and then Adams, Cheshire, Clarksburg, Florida, Mass, Hancock, New Ashford, North Adams, Pittsfield, Windsor, Mass. Windsor, Mass are all within Berkshire County, within Massachusetts, folks that are joining our Williamstown and Lanesboro students. And our, our Hancock and New Ashford students there, as well as three students from Vermont.
Hey, can I just ask a question?
Of course, Carrie.
I applaud the vision of one hundred per, and that's about what we had. Like ten years ago, when we did the building project or when we entered the state building. Pipeline. And they, the state predicted that we would be down to, you know, five, about where we are now, right? We asked for five eighty-five, which was what we had, and they, they were like, no, we'll give you five thirty-five. And so do you anticipate any issues going up to six hundred, given the building was built for five thirty-five? So to speak. I know there's a lot of wiggle room, so I'm not worried, but I could imagine other people might be.
I think it's an excellent point and, and it, and it bears watching on an annual basis with where our numbers are as our numbers ideally creep up. But, but yeah, I, I, I would foresee, and, and this is not. It is specific to Mount Greylock because that's what we're talking about, but it's, but it's a challenge, I think, in every new school that gets built. Because most new schools outside of. Outside of really sort of four ninety-five. Experience that exact same thing where the MSBA had you build for where they predict you're going to be. I, I would think that that lunchtime presents likely the biggest challenge. I know that sounds kind of, that may sound silly to anybody that's watching this, anybody that's worked in a school or helped run a school would understand. I think lunchtime likely presents the biggest challenge. The, the, the capacity of the cafeteria. And the ability to move students through line in a timely enough manner. That, that they can have the time that human beings deserve to consume, to consume a meal and socialize a little bit. And relax a little bit before they get back on with their work. I do think it would, it would be, it will be interesting to watch. How the lunch line works, if and when we reach a point where lunches are not free anymore, that could have an impact. I also think there's many ways to consider. You know, maybe not being quite as traditional with there's two lunch lines and two checkout stations and food is consumed in this particular space. I, I, I think there are ways to work around that. But, but that, that would be my, my biggest concern that I would have from observing things thus far. I, I think obviously we, we might be looking at, at needing to increase some staff in strategic areas, both classroom teachers. And perhaps even counseling and, and support staff. But I don't think we would be doing that in a way that would be disproportionate with the amount of money that would be coming in to the district attached to the increased student body.
Got it. Thanks.
You're, you're very welcome and thank you. That, that was a good question. Just because I know you're, you're interested and we've, we've, this will be the third year in a row that we've discussed this and wanting to get a handle on, on. New phase of COVID homeschool. In this column, this, this chart set up a little differently than the previous, so I hope that's not confusing, but. Twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, really the, the year bef. That, 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 the pandemic hit. Late in the winter, early in the spring, you can see where we were for, for homeschool students. Really reached what I would assume is an all-time high during the twenty twenty-one school year, you know, a total of sixty-two students. Last year saw gradual return to what I think we would generally consider more normalcy. I think twenty-two, twenty-three, the year we're in now represents even a, a, another. Another step forward into that returning to. Numbers that, that look and feel. More like what is traditionally considered normal in communities like this. I do through some conversations with the families that submit homeschool plans, I do think there were some families that. Did homeschooling during the real heat in the heart of the pandemic. And realized that was a lifestyle that. A, the grownups enjoyed. B, the students appreciated. And, and that it was something that they wanted to make whatever sacrifices were necessary as a family. And I do see homeschooling. Done well and done right, as so many of our families do. It's, it's an educational choice. It's also very, very much a lifestyle choice. And I think there are some families that are friends and neighbors that found that lifestyle to be very appealing to them in certain ways. So. I, I think it will take a couple of more years of looking at, at this column that's furthest out to the right. To, to see what, what normal is and perhaps define a new normal, but. But, but certainly we are, we, we welcomed several students back who, who continued to homeschool through last year. Who are now back with us and we're very grateful to have them. I, I, I would say, you know, I think I've covered most of this. A, a healthy enrollment and a robust enrollment is really good for our schools. We, we do happen to be in a position where we, we have. Several good options for increasing our enrollment. While, while also able to keep a, a hand on that wheel to make sure that, that. The vehicle stays in the center of the lane where we need it to be. I think a thoughtful and strategic use of school choice and tuition and out-of-state tuition has. The potential for several positive in fact, impacts. It can certainly diversify our student body and in, in many of the different ways that we might want to define diversity. We are still currently using the empty seats approach, which means we're not really adding cost by welcoming students into our school and into our community. We are filling what we consider to be empty seats. So you know, that work to ensure a specific number of grade level slots and sections each year. Rather than the responding to sometimes wildly fluctuating cohort sides. I think just makes the world more predictable and more positive for everybody. A strategic thoughtful use of the ways that we have to increase our enrollment. Does bring additional financial resources to our district in. In turbulent economic times. It's, it's really a benefit to have a, a school choice cushion. It's really a benefit to have tuition monies coming in, not only from those that we have formal agreements with. But particularly thinking a little more expansively, particularly with, with our Vermont neighbors who might want to be here. That's money that really gets directly reinvested right back into serving kids and helping teachers and counselors. And paraprofessionals and other staff members serve students. And I think ultimately, and this makes, you know, probably. More sense to those of you that are thinking about it from a middle, high school level. It, it certainly has the potential to allow for a more vigorous and a more rigorous course of studies. For our, for our older students in particular. So we will continue to keep all of the things listed in the bottom bullet and more in mind as we move forward doing this, but. I, I, I'm, I'm very pleased that the district is in a position. In terms of the quality product we offer. In terms of people outside of the district knowing where our priorities are. Who we are, what we're about, and that we're student-centered such that people are wanting to come in and we do have waiting lists. Across the board at all three of our schools. So it's, it's, to me, it's good news all around. I, I certainly am. Cannot speak for the affordability of housing in either of our member towns in our school district. So you know, ideally those towns, their populations remain robust. Hopefully families with school-aged children. Are in a position to continue to move into those towns. I'm very grateful that we have the opportunity to look at, at ways outside of home purchases that may allow us to stay. Vigorous, rigorous and robust. And grow in, in spite of what is happening in, in real estate world. The last slide I have is just, you know, some gratitude to wrap this up. We've covered an awful lot of this. Our fall athletes have been fantastic. They've traveled great distances. They've really sacrificed to be part of our athletic program. Their families have too. Most of them are continuing their season as we speak. We're very thankful. The words are wonderful at Williamstown Elementary. Truly wonderful and truly amazing. Once again. As somebody newish to the district, it still blows me away to see that in action. And it's thanks to hundreds of hours of work by some wonderful people. Thank you to Lanesboro Elementary School for getting back a tradition this year. They hosted their. Their annual Veterans Day breakfast and that was very special and very well-attended. Thank you to Carrie specifically. Thank you for giving up your time to, to go down to the conference. I know the stuff that you were trying to fit in between conference stuff, like professional stuff and, and family stuff, and I know what a sacrifice that was, and I'm very grateful. That, that you were willing to do it. Thank you to the athletes, coaches, families and fans of our unified basketball team. Last night's Greylock Classic was amazing. It is, it will stick in my memory as one of the best things I have attended in a school anywhere since I've. Started kindergarten myself a few years ago. Just a wonderful time and, and that's going to be an annual tradition and I hope everybody. The next few years can make it to that. Thank you. If you remember last school committee meeting, we were really jammed up against the concert that was happening over at Mount Greylock. The concert was wonderful. It amazes me that our student musicians and the people, the teachers that support them and their families. What they were able to pull together between the beginning of the school year and a month and a half later was just unbelievable. And thank you to them for all of their hard work. Thank you to Simron for an amazing several days with us and thank you to Joel for organizing that. And thanks to everyone involved in the Fall Festival. Today, the sixth graders from Hancock, Lanesboro and Williamstown. All came to watch the play. Our seventh and eighth graders all gathered with those sixth graders to watch the play. And the audience was amazing. The play is about eighty-five minutes long. These students watching the auditorium and it was nearly full. All of you would have been so proud of our kids, not only on the stage. They were impressive. They were unbelievable. It's a fun play. I hope everybody gets the chance to see it. The directors from Shakespeare and Company are clearly brilliant at what they do and we're grateful to have them. But our students in the audience were similarly brilliant. And so thank you to their teachers and everybody for. For giving up that time and for allowing them to come and see this. And those are all memories that I will keep in my head, but more importantly, I will, as, as the. The amazing Lionel Hampton told us once, I'll also keep those memories in, in my heart and many others. So thank you for, for that. I don't know if there were questions on the. On the enrollment report, but, but we, we see that as really good news and we're excited to, to, to approach that as the years go by. So thank you. Jose?
Jake, in this spirit of gratitude that, that you, you ended your. Report. With this on, I, I want to say thank you and I'm sure we all, we're all here on the screen, want to thank you for all of the incredible work and dedication you've given our kids and given our community. And we hope to enjoy many more years of them service.
We, we are trying hard. We are trying hard. Thank you. That's it. Thanks, Christina. That's it for me.
Thank you. Sorry, I was having some weird internet blips. Who knows what's, what's up with that? Thank you very much. Okay. So I would like to make a motion to move into executive session with intent to return to open session per MGL Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One, A-One to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health. Rather than professional competence of an individual.
Miller, I will second.
Hey, all in favor? Roll call.
Oh, and I.
Conry, I.
Constantine, I.
Elvin, by an I.
Green eye.
Miller, I.
It's nine fifty-five PM. I will try to create a. Breakout session and. Unpausing and we are now recording again. Okay. It is ten oh seven PM. We are back in open session. Next up on the agenda, upcoming meetings. There's a Field and Track Project Committee, November fourth fifteenth at four PM. Finance Subcommittee Meeting, November seventeenth and December first, both at four PM. The School Committee Joint Meeting with the Field and Track Project Committee, November seventeenth at six PM. Policy and Governance Subcommittee Meeting, November thirtieth at five PM. And a, our next regular session, School Committee Meeting is December eighth at six PM. I have no other items for discussion. Any agenda requests? Hearing none, would let someone like to make a motion to adjourn? Curtis moves. Do I have a second? Julia, seconds. All in favor?
Oh, and I.
Conry, I.
Constantine, I.
Elvin, by an I.
Oh, green eye. Sorry, I'm looking at her slug.
You're trying to hold our meeting longer.
I was ready.
Miller, it's the same waters before.
Ten oh eight PM. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much. Everyone, drive safely.
Yeah, safe travels, everyone.